And public staff, fellow commissioners. These online meetings can be challenging. It's hard enough in person when you have visual cues to do this, and it's a lot harder by remote. So with that in mind, we'll be reviewing the process as we go through this, and I will do my best to add some granularity to a particular process, what's coming up next, how the process goes, and what the opportunities are for input and how that looks. And Mr. Tapia will be providing in a moment some information on the actual mechanics of interaction through the platform. My role this evening as the chair is primarily as a traffic director. This is, well, my role is to keep the questioning going, the votes, the tallying, and keep some sense of process to what we're doing. It's important that everyone keep in mind that this is a public meeting. It is being transcribed, it's being recorded for minutes. So I'll look for input to come through the chair in terms of questioning, response to the questions. I'll ask for the applicants to come through the chair, asking another commissioner, and the commissioner to come back for me to do that. And commissioners can feel free, when they have the mic, so to speak, or they're up in terms of their talking, they can ask multiple questions without checking back in with the chair. Certainly, it's when the commissioners proceed to stop with any particular line of questioning that it comes back to the chair, and I'll call on someone else to either proceed or move to the next part of the agenda. So with that, I'll turn to Mr. Tapia to provide any additional guidance on the mechanics and the technical aspect of this evening's meeting. Mr. Tapia?
Thank you, Chair Barnes. I apologize for the slight. Okay, there we go. So yeah, thanks again for everyone who's joining us today for the first time. Just as a brief reminder, the GoTo Web App webinar that we are currently using only supports six video screens at one time. So just as a reminder for those who are not presenting or have a speaking or essentially something to say at that given moment, please refrain from turning on your webcam, because again, the system can only support six webcams at a time. So just as a brief reminder for the commissioners, when you do have a comment or question or a response to a fellow commissioner or to the chair, please turn on your webcam and your microphone, and then once you have completed your item, please turn off your webcam and your microphone again. And then for those who are joining us through the public, you will have an opportunity to ask a comment or question for an item. When the chair calls for a public comment at that time, there is a control panel, I believe on the right-hand side of your screen. It is a green hand icon which you could click on to notify a member of staff that you have a comment or question, or alternatively, there is a question field in your control panel where you can insert a question and a member of staff can read it aloud. And then, just as a brief reminder again, the chair will have their webcam on at all times. And for those who are participating as an applicant or a presenter tonight, a member of staff will activate your control panel in case you do have a presentation so that you can operate the presentation. And then just once again, please, if you do not have a speaking role at that given time, please refrain from having your microphone on. And then again, just, the same applies with the webcams. The system can only support six video screens at one time. And with that, I believe that is everything in terms of the procedural outline. Chair Barnes?
Thank you. Appreciate that. So at this moment, I will proceed to call roll. And the mechanics of calling roll is when I call your name, the commissioner's name, please hit your video button, I'll acknowledge you, and then you can proceed to turn off your video. We use the same process for voting as well. And I will do this in alphabetical order for the roll call. And I'll start with Commissioner DeCarty. Good evening. Commissioner Doran.
Here.
Good evening. Commissioner Cale.
Here.
Good evening. Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Riggs. Good evening. And Commissioner Tate. Good evening. And with myself being present, I'll just review the roll. Present this evening are Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Cale, Kennedy, Riggs, and Tate. There are no commissioners absent. Thank you. Proceeding from their reports and announcements, Ms. Sandmeyer, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and commissioners. So as updates, so tomorrow night, the city council will be making appointments to various commissions, including the planning commission. There will also be an update at the city council on the city's response to COVID-19, including possible street closures, including portions of Santa Cruz Avenue and other streets downtown, to help businesses operate partially outside for safety reasons. And then I also want to provide an update on building permits. So all building permits are now being accepted, although there's a pre-application process that may make it a little, take a little longer, but they are all now being accepted for all types of projects. And that concludes my announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Mr. DeCarty.
Thanks for the updating, Ms. Sandmeyer, and thank you and staff for all that you continue to do to keep us operating through all of this. I have a question for you about the timing, if you know, about when the general plan or aspects of the general plan will be opened again for consideration by the city.
Yeah, I don't have the exact timing on that. Is there, I can find that out for next time. Are there specific elements you're looking for?
The reason I ask is that I would like us to consider as a commission, well in advance of considerations of elements or the general plan, to have a study session that would take into account an understanding of the changed circumstances in our community, given COVID and the long-term implications for public spaces and public use because of the recession and the increasing inequity. And as a planning commission, I don't believe we've ever had discussion that was elevated in the Almanac series about the long history of redlining and discrimination and zoning policies in our city. Seems important to me that we would make time to hear from our community in all interests, including developers like Gray Star, who I now understand is the largest owner of apartments in the country, about best practices in other communities. So I was trying to understand the timing, just to make the point that before that happens, I believe would be important for us to have a session where we could hear that and have that educational opportunity as a commission.
Thank you. This is pursuant to the May 4 minutes that we have just reviewed. At that meeting, the Dunbarton Rail was discussed by, with a Facebook representative, and we first learned that there is some hesitancy on the part of Facebook, and we asked questions for which they did not have answers. Fergus indicated that he would have subsequently would follow up with information to this body. Ms. Sandmeyer, I wonder if you could let us know what has transpired.
Yeah, so, thank you for your questions. I believe that Facebook has met the terms that are required of them in the DA as it relates to the Dunbarton Rail corridor. So I guess Commissioner Riggs, if you have more, like, specific questions, that would be helpful. Otherwise, I think the city council will be responding kind of on the process and the whole project of the rail corridor.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe two of us did have specific questions on May 4th, and we did ask, among other things, for confirmation that the study that was underway and the commitment to that study outside of the Facebook Building 22 approval, that that study was going to be completed. There was doubt raised by Mr. O'Shea, and that was of concern to some of us, given that that is potentially the most important transportation issue for the South Bay, possibly the most important in two decades or more. And he did promise to come back with information regarding to confirm that commitment and to say where they are. If it's more appropriate for this body to work through the city manager's office, just let us know, and that would be possible also. I believe that's possible.
Yeah, um, let's see. I can coordinate with Kyle Perata, who's the project manager for the Facebook project, but I do believe that Facebook has met their obligations in relation to funding the study. But we can look into that some more.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to press you for something that you, that you're not comfortable with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
I would like to echo Commissioner DeCarty's request on sort of a, maybe a study session or more of a discussion around the long history, not just of Menlo Park, but the long history of redlining and disinvestment in communities of color historically. And I do think that, you know, as we continue to parlay and leverage tremendous amount of what seems to be nonfinite resources into that community that sort of circumvent the core asset, which is the Bellhaven community, you know, I really think it's time for that one of those conversations. You know, I think in light of the current climate, that we really have to reel back a lot of those layers, and as we, as the City's seeded Planning Commission, as we continue to make decisions impacting and affecting, you know, our community, including and most specifically Bellhaven, I think we really need to take pause and really think about, you know, what layer, what we're layering on top of. And so, you know, I think the time is now, and I would really like to see that made
Commissioner Tate.
I'd like to echo that. I would like to see it made a priority also, and hopefully, we can get this on our agenda sometime soon, so that it gives time for us to think and to identify whether or not we need to bring it back so that more community members can participate and learn also. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question for the commissioners who asked, I guess, for the study session on redlining. Is this, so this would be in relation to an updated housing, housing element of the general plan, is that right?
I think, yes, sorry, yes, housing. And I think it goes generally to sort of, you know, looking at the way in which the many lenses, and this is, I'm sorry if this is not very convenient, but, you know, the many lenses in which we are looking at Bellhaven at the moment. And, you know, it became a prime target of investment when commercially and economically was feasible and fortuitous for Menlo Park as a whole. And I think that, you know, I could say it a little less directly, but I do think that without, you know, had Facebook not come and had we not had this enormous tech bubble, you know, Bellhaven would still be suffering, because it is suffering. And I think that we really have to look at it through a very targeted lens. So yes, the housing element is part of that. I think that's one, that's one particular piece, but I think it's really, you know, more of how we, you know, how adjacent we have made the Bellhaven community when it has, when it has worked to our advantage. So the short answer is, yes, the housing element is a great place to start.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just reinforce, thank you to the chair, I apologize. And I appreciate, Ms. Sandmeyer, you following up with a question. That's why I asked, I believe it's with the housing element. I believe it's with any aspect of the general plan that would be coming back. But I also believe it's important for us to begin the process of understanding from the community and from the key constituents who work with us regularly, how they see this community now. It is going to forever change because of these multiple elements that have happened now, and we need to begin the process of being able to understand that and to be able to be educated as a planning commission so that we will better serve the community and all of its constituents. I really appreciate Commissioner Tate's comment about soon, and I understand we have a lot happening, and you have a lot happening, but that this is likely to be more than one session over a period of time. So it's why I wanted to raise it now, so that you could take it into consideration, given that you also have an awful lot on your plate in difficult circumstances right now, which I recognize. Thank you.
I'd also like for us to take a look at how, how all of this fits in, excuse me, with the specific plan, because if we're looking at the history of the community and redlining, it's very important for us to understand the specific plan also, and how that fits into Connect Menlo. And so I'd like to see that added to the, to the mix for us to study. Thank you.
Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have any follow-up questions, or do you have what you need?
I probably have mostly what I need. I'll need to coordinate with planning management and see how this fits into our workload and how it fits into the, what the city council is working on. But I will, I will get back to the commission with a response.
Thank you. And seeing no other commissioners with any other comments, I'll proceed to close, I'll proceed to close reports and announcements and proceed to public comment. As a public comment is concerned, we'll do this in two parts. One, first, I'll read the customary description of public comment, and then I'll look to Mr. Tapia to fill us in and guide us through whether there's any public comment and who's in queue for that. Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. And what that means for people who are here virtually to give public comment, this is the time, this particular time is the time where we would accept public comment and hear from you, thankfully, for items which were not listed on the agenda. If you are here to speak on an item that's listed on the agenda, each specific item will have a point in time where I will call for public comment for that specific item, and you can give it at that time. That way, the public comment is geared towards that particular item. So with that, if anyone has public comment for an issue or for an item which is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to give that. And Mr. Tapia, can you advise us on the status?
Yes, thank you, Chair Barnes. So just as a quick reminder, for those who are joining us as members of the public tonight, there is a control panel on your screen, and there is a green hand icon which you can click on to notify a member of staff that you do have a question or comment. Alternatively, there is a question field in your control panel, which you can then use to type in a question or comment, and a member of staff can read it aloud. So again, just feel free to click on the hand icon or type in a question. And at this moment, Chair Barnes, I'm not seeing any questions or hands being raised by any members of the public.
Commissioner Cale.
I'd like to make a public comment that it did not seem appropriate for reports and announcements.
Sure.
Okay. Larry Cale, member of the planning commission, but I'm speaking for myself. I'd like to follow up on the issue that Commissioners DeCarty, Kennedy, and Tate talked about, which is, of course, of all the peaceful protests that we've all been seeing, calling for a change. And the point of these protests is to put pressure on our leaders. And of course, as planning commission members, we don't really have much authority to make changes, but we are at a de facto leadership role, so I think it's important that I lend my voice towards, towards making those changes. To that end, I wanted to voice my support for the peaceful protest and to encourage police reform, including a national standardization of police policies and a demilitarization, demilitarization of police forces. I also like to see a reallocation of tax dollars, first to meet public safety requirements, but secondly, to provide adequate funding for community resources that will address the root causes of our problems. This includes housing, mental health services, and I think, most importantly, education, education, education. This would be at the city, state, and national levels. I saw something online today that summarized it fairly well. It said that law and order is not achieved by law enforcement, but with education, jobs, and mental health. So I want to encourage our elected leaders towards meaningful reform and encourage people to vote like your life depended on it and vote like your country depends on it. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, and I'll reconfirm that with Mr. Tapia, there's no one in queue for public comment, correct?
That is correct, Chair Barnes.
Okay. So with that, I will proceed to close public comment, item D in tonight's agenda, and proceed to E, the consent calendar. E1 and E2, approval of minutes from May 4th, approval minutes from May 18th. Mr. DeCarty.
Yeah, I'd like to pull E1 from the consent calendar. I have a question for staff.
E1 is pulled. Okay, let's, let's do that first.
Okay, thank you. It's a question to staff on page 11 of the minutes. It summarizes the feedback from the discussion. This is around transportation for our input for the city council. And it's got bullet points summarizing input from Commissioners Barnes, DeCarty, and Riggs, six bullet points. I actually, I don't have concerns about those bullet points. My question for staff is, in the information that's gone to the city council for the agenda for this item being summarized and discussed tomorrow night, that summary is not the same. It actually does not draw out some of the distinctions that Commissioners Riggs, Barnes, and I drew on a couple of the items. And I wanted to ask staff if it would be possible to simply take the bulleted summary from these minutes as a more accurate representation than what is currently before the city council on the more truncated summary.
Commissioner DeCarty, apologize, I was forwarding a public comment we just received, so I missed the...
Slide, stay my question again.
Very beginning, what item was this on?
This is item E1. It's the minutes from the May 4th, 2020 Planning Commission. It's on page 11, which is the summary staff had from our transportation discussion, where we were actually, it was being summarized, and then it is now put in the package that is going to the city council for tomorrow night. My question is that the bulleted points in these minutes, which from my standpoint are fine as a summary of the discussion, are not the same as what has been put in the packet for the city council tomorrow night. It's a shorter truncated summary, which makes it look like there is agreement on items from Commissioners Barnes, DeCarty, and Riggs, when a couple of them, we actually did not see it the same way. I wondered why the distinction, if it would be possible to simply take the bulleted points from these minutes to the city council, rather than what I don't think is exactly the same summary.
All right, thank you, Commissioner DeCarty, for repeating that question. I believe that staff report was written by the Transportation Division. I can follow up with them if they can provide an update to the city council based on the information that's in the Planning Commission minutes. That would be helpful.
I think it would be appropriate, and I appreciate it. Thank you. To the chair, I pulled it simply for that reason. I actually don't have any suggestions for revisions on these minutes, but I wanted to make that point, so I leave it to you to take it from here, and thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you. So with that, Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Would you like to approve, make a motion for E1 and E2, or just go with E1, since we don't have revision for E1?
Yes, for the calendar, so both E1 and E2 together.
Got it. So the consent calendar, the minutes as offered, we have a first from Riggs, second from DeCarty. I will do the calling of commissioner names in order for a vote, the consent calendar. Commissioner DeCarty. Commissioner Doran.
Yes.
Commissioner Cale.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Riggs.
A little slow on the digital, but yes.
Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate.
Abstention. Let the record show that, and Commissioner Barnes is voting yes as well. Let the record show and plead Commissioners Tate and Kennedy indicate if I have, if I misrepresent your vote. Let the record show that voting yes are voting to approve our Commissioners Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Cale, Riggs, with Commissioners Kennedy and Tate abstaining. That is the vote for the consent calendar. From there, we will proceed to public hearing. And before I go into the first agenda item for tonight's public hearing, for those of you that are joining us for the first time and for folks who have been with us and want to make sure you understand the process, I'm going to call out the steps associated with this, this process, so you can kind of make a mental map of how it's going to go. For public hearing, the objective is to get to a motion and a vote. And the process will be, first, I'll look to staff for any updates to the staff report. Then I'll ask fellow commissioners if they have any clarifying questions to staff related to the staff report, or if there's any updates to the staff report. Then we'll go to the applicant for a project presentation. And important to note during this time is, we view the applicant and the owner, obviously as being one, and now's the time, if the owner would like to speak, in this time of presentation time is the time for the owner to add their voice into the applicant, whomever is presenting the project within that timeframe. Further input from, quote, "the applicant team" is generally restricted at that time to responding to questions from the commissioners. So during the project presentation time is the time to speak and let us know about your project. From there, we'll go back to clarifying questions from the fellow commissioners related to the presentation. Then I'll open it up to public comment, I'll close public comment. From there, bring it back to the virtual diet. We'll have further commissioner conversation, discussion, potential questions, and that will culminate in a motion and a vote. Could be a number of them, and eventually get to an outcome of some type on the project. So with that, I will look to the first project we have this evening, which is, let me show you the order right. This is F1, Use Permit in Variance, 2312 Warner Range Avenue. This is a request for a variance for a front setback of 12 feet, where 20 feet is required in order to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit at an existing two-story, single-family home in the R1F, Single Family Suburban Residential District. The front setback is measured on Crest Lane, which is the shorter of two street-facing property lines. The project also includes a one-story addition at the functional rear of the main residence. The proposal includes a request for a use permit to construct a new seven-foot fence within the front setback. As part of the proposed development, One Heritage Magnolia Tree is proposed for removal. So with that, I will look to Mr. Turner, whose project I believe this is, to let us know if there are any updates. Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and Commissioners. I do not have anything to add to the staff report at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my fellow commissioners for Mr. Turner? Mr. Doran.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, there's a discussion in the staff report on page four, number four, about the election of the, which lot line is the front and which is the side of the house. In the application, the applicant claims that the zoning ordinance was amended or changed after the house was built to, in such a way that designated Crest as the front lot line. Can you confirm, the house was built 1962. Can you confirm or deny when that zoning ordinance designating Crest as the front lot line was enacted?
Not off of the top of my head. I'm not sure when the zoning ordinance was amended to allow for that lot line election. In this case, the zoning ordinance that is in effect today would be the zoning ordinance that is applicable to projects. So it sort of doesn't matter when the zoning ordinance was amended because the lot line election process would be applicable to this process.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry Chair Barnes, I couldn't hear you, recalling me? Thank you. I'm following up on Commissioner Doran's question, I think. If, in fact, it was reoriented, the reason it wouldn't be allowed is because, from my understanding and reading, that the garage would encroach. Is there a page in the materials that you could refer to where you could illustrate how much that encroachment would be visually? Were it reoriented so that the front was actually on the longer as opposed to the shorter side?
For clarification, are you asking which, like, plan set page would illustrate this?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just to be able to visually understand if the setback on the longer side were actually the front setback, how much of the existing structure would be out of compliance?
I think the best sheet to look at that would be the survey that shows the actual dimension from the lot line to the garage. It may not be the best visual representation. I believe the applicants have a presentation that has pictures to better visualize how much of a difference that would be.
All right. So just to clarify, survey, so D4 might be the best one to look at, and perhaps we'll let the applicant make their presentation. I can follow up with a specific question after. Thank you.
Chair Barnes, this is Leo. I don't think your audio is coming in through, at least on my end.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions for staff before I call for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll proceed now to hear from the applicant in the form, in whatever form they have for this evening's project introduction and presentation. Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you. I apologize, we have two computers and one phone, so hopefully everything will work out. I'm going to be looking up here, so I'm not looking distantly and thinking about other things. I'm actually looking at the one I can read. Thank you for taking the time this evening, and also thanks to Chris for the help through the process. I really do appreciate it. We'll try to be brief, but don't take our brevity as being anything other than trying to be respectful of your time. We're very serious about this and have thought deeply about these issues. Just to answer the question, yeah, I believe that D4 would probably be the best page to look at the encouragement. Just to give you a sense, it's 14 inches is the distance on the corner of our garage property. So let's see if I can do this. There we go. So the house was built 1962. When the plans were filed, the front was identified as Warner Range. We bought the house in 1999, 21 years ago. Recently, my mom and Susie's mom have become quite ill and really incapable of walking up and downstairs. In fact, when we had our daughter's graduation from high school last year, my mom was not able even to go into the house and so wasn't able to spend any time with us here and had to stay in a hotel. My wife's mom was able to stay at the house and stayed upstairs in her bedroom, but unfortunately got sick and had to be taken out through, you know, by an ambulance to take her from the second story. So this really got us focused on, we want to, we want to put something in place where our parents can live, where our adult children can live, where others could live, and certainly ultimately potentially, we can live. So we wanted it on the first floor, contiguous with the rest of the house. And that's why we designed what we did. We designed it specifically to fit within the setbacks of Crest Avenue, which are 12 feet as the side. If that is muted at the front, it's 20 feet, but if it's muted at the side, it's 12. We were prevented from building the ADU that way unless we changed the designation of Crest from the front to Warner Range being the front, or we obtained this variance. However, because our garage encroached by 14 inches, the corner of it encroached by 14 inches into the, what would be the front setback of Warner Range, we were unable to obtain that adjustment. And so our choice really is to tear down our garage and move it back 14 inches or obtain this variance. So the planning department again considers this, that we're asking to encroach a setback by eight feet. We believe we're asking for a 14-inch accommodation on the corner of our garage through obtaining this variance. So as Chris said, the slightly shorter side of the property is regarded as Crest, and so that is the front of the house, it's regarded as the front. In reality, this is a picture of the front of our house then on Crest Avenue. And this is the side of our house. When we designed the ADU, we designed it to be consistent with the Cape Cod architecture, to be symmetrical in shape, to be connected to the house so that people could access it through one floor with no steps, no grade adjustments, or anything else. Similarly, we designed it as a one-story addition so that the entire house would essentially be covered by the trees that we have on the side, on the Crest Avenue side of the house. So again, to give a sense, from the front of the house, we took this picture early in the season when these trees didn't have leaves on them. If you had those on them, you wouldn't see back into where that addition would be. So it essentially is not going to be viewable by Warner Range, anyone looking on Warner Range, nor clearly looking at it from Crest Avenue side. So there were two alternatives that were suggested by the planning department that we do, that they stated were feasible, but we do not believe were reasonable, practical, or desirable. One was to put the ADU to the left of the garage and to, what that would do is it would effectively require us to move a retaining wall that we had built a number of years ago, that's four feet. I'm sorry, our dog just joined us. And we would be required to move the retaining wall, and we'd also have to build a structure where the occupants would have to walk outside, either through the backyard or around the front yard to get into the main house. So from my parents' perspective, and certainly when my mom was alive, she was using a walker, and that would just not be feasible. So the functionality of the ADU would be lost. It is an 11-foot slope from where the building pad is and where the top of the, of where we believe the retaining wall would have to be built up here. It's about, that's about eight or nine feet right there. We believe that architecturally it would not be consistent with the rest of the house or the neighborhood where people have been thoughtful about what they've been doing, and so they aren't building McMansions. And they're building attractive houses that fit within the design of the neighborhood. Any addition over on that side would be more visible to the neighbors, and it would certainly block any light source we have. Because of the nature of the hillside sloping up in all directions, we have very limited light in the back, but certainly placing something in the southwest corner would block any of the remaining light that we have. So that was alternative one. The second alternative was that the state had changed the regulations so that an ADU could be placed in the garage. But we use our garage to store cars, as do most of our neighbors. And, you know, we don't believe that that would be appropriate, you know, to our neighbors. We do not believe we can build above the garage because that would be inconsistent with trying to make this usable by our elderly parents. So we certainly do not want to disrespect our neighbors. We don't want to change our garage. We don't want to have our cars parked outside. So those are the reasons why we disagree with the two alternatives that are presented. Speaking of our neighbors, sorry, I missed a picture. We did have the full support of our neighbors. Gloria Markey, who's lived, I think, in that house since 1960, but certainly we've been neighbors with her for 21 years. I was very supportive, she's across the street. Bill and Robin have been neighbors for 20 years. They moved in right after we did. And Mitch and Alice have recently moved in, and they're our next-door neighbors. And all three submitted their support for the project. So in summary, you know, our design supports efforts to address the housing issues. It's architecturally appealing and unobtrusive. It's well within square footage restrictions for our lot. We have 28, I believe, mature trees on the property, including 10 heritage trees. We're suggesting that we remove one of the heritage trees, but replace it so we would have, again, I believe, 26 trees after this on a quarter-acre lot. So this is a mature property with lots of trees and lots of plants on it. It's minimal impact to the neighbors. The ADU wouldn't be visible from the street on either Warner Range or Crest. We have the full support of our neighbors, and it enables us to take care of our parents, children, and ultimately our. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I will call for any clarifying questions from Commissioners for the applicant. Commissioner Doran.
You mentioned that the frontage on Crest Lane, the lot line, is slightly shorter than the one on Warner Range. I know the number is here in the application or in the staff report someplace. I'm wondering if you could just clarify the length of the lot line is on Crest versus the one on Warner Range. How much shorter is it on Crest?
I think it's like 96 feet compared to 126 feet.
Thank you.
When you look at it, it looks kind of like a square, but I guess there is a difference.
If there are no other clarifying questions from Commissioners, I will proceed to call for public comment. Mr. Tapia?
Thank you, Chair Barnes. So again, for members of the public who have a comment or question related to this item specifically, there is a green hand icon on your screen which you could use to notify a member of staff that you would like to speak on this item. Alternatively, there is a question field in your control panel which you could use to type in a question or comment, and a member of staff can read that comment or question aloud. and a member of staff can read that comment or question aloud. And at this moment, there are no comments or questions coming through, but we could give it some time. Chair Barnes.
Seeing, no, no one in queue to offer public comment. I will proceed now to close public comment and bring it back to the dais for commissioner discussion. Commissioner Cale.
Thank you. So in general, variances should be hard to get, and there should be a compelling reason for them. Before I even read the staff report, I looked at the drawings, and my first thought was, it looked like there were alternate places for the, for the ADU that could be on the left or perhaps in the garage. And then I read the staff report that did not support the variance. Again, I'm sympathetic to the needs of the owners, but I don't see a compelling reason, and I don't want to set a precedent by granting this variance. In addition, just looking at the front elevation, the Cape Cod's are supposed to be very symmetrical. And with the addition stepping back the way it does to meet the setback and the different roof pitches, I don't see the symmetry here. So I have to agree with the staff report, and it's unfortunate that it got this far, that the applicant first decided to proceed even without the staff sort of providing the support that they would like to see. But I think the staff is correct here that the variance should not be granted.
Commissioner Doran.
Well, I have to disagree. I can support this application for the variance. I think that the ADU is consistent with policy in the state, county, and city of Menlo Park to encourage the development of ADUs. I think that they can make, I feel that I can make the findings for the variance. I agree that variances should be hard to get. But I think in particular, in this case, you know, they have some topographical restrictions. Due to the slopes, I think a lot of houses, especially in Shanghai, share. But I think what's different is this question of redesignating or rezoning the lot after the house was built. If the current zoning had been in effect at the time the house had been constructed, it's quite likely that different choices would have been made at that time. And they would have set back the garage 14 inches to make the functional house, the actual floor of the house. So I think that is a hardship on the owners. I think philosophically, at least, I disagree with Mr. Turner about whether the date of the enactment of that zoning ordinance makes a difference or not. Legally, it may not. The city, I understand, can backzone properties after they're built. Zoning can also be challenged on that basis. And actually, I think the zoning ordinance is vulnerable on that basis. Zoning is intended to regulate the way places are built, not to regulate them after they're built. So I think philosophically, I have a problem with changing the rules after the house is built. And certainly, I have another problem with that to make the findings that not granting the variance would be a hardship on this property. I feel it would be a hardship. I say, I feel comfortable making the findings for the variance. I think that the ADU is, the variance question side, I think ADU is very supportable. It's modest in size. I understand the homeowner's need for it. I think that, as I've mentioned, that our policy is in favor of building these ADUs, as reflected in the state laws. As far as the architectural concerns for Mr. Cale, I understand that and I hear it. I think you see Cape Cod's with additions often that are less symmetrical than this. Houses get added on to over time. They grow over time. Cape Cod's have been added to over centuries, and it's not unusual at all to see a little bit of lack of symmetry. And I am an offensive, I mean, I accept that we're symmetrical, but I certainly don't see that as a reason to deny this application for the ADU. As I said, I'm prepared to support it.
Commissioner Kennedy.
I'm in 100% agreement with Commissioner Doran. I do think that, given that this community is bereft of a significant supply of affordable housing units, in particular, small units, 750, 1,000 square feet, you know, I think it's time to sort of set aside our overwhelming commitment to maintaining architectural value over housing folks. I grew up in a Cape Cod, and, you know, amendments to, you know, architectural amendments and renovations to Cape Cod typically happen in the single dormer or demo dormer sort of standard, and they're quite ugly. I think that what the applicants are recommending is well within our, you know, well within what I think is the spirit of how a variance should be compelling and the need to satisfy something. And I think we need to start being forward-thinking about how we're looking at variances. You know, this is an opportunity to allow for more homes in Menlo Park to serve more than one traditional family and to do something that we as a city have failed to do. So our applicants and our homeowners are, in fact, doing our job. So I would agree with Commissioner Doran, and I would make a motion to approve this variance.
So we have a first from Commissioner Kennedy to approve this project. And speaking to Commissioner Kennedy, there's two pieces to this. There's a use permit, and there's a variance associated with this project. Is your motion for one, the other, or both?
Both. It is for both.
To approve the project per the staff report. Okay, inclusive of both of those, the recommended actions in Attachment A.
Yes.
Commissioner Doran.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have got a first from Kennedy, a second from Doran. Mr. Turner, do you have a?
The recommended actions in the staff report are findings of denial. So the commission would actually need to come up with conditions of findings of approval for the variance. So suggest maybe changing the motion to, and work on making those findings.
Thank you for that. That's, you're exactly right. So what we'll do is we'll go back to Commissioner Kennedy to make those findings or designate someone else, for instance, your secondar on the motion to walk through the findings. And for reference, Mr. Turner, for the variance, there's four, excuse me, five points. And from a structure perspective, you are looking for the maker or the secondar, whomever, to talk to that particular, number one, for instance, that the hardship particular to the property, et cetera, et cetera, and why, in fact, that's not, why, say more about that. So why the variance should be allowed.
Correct. The commissioners would need to make the findings in the affirmative. And, for example, the first finding of why there's a hardship not of the applicant's doing, and so on and so forth. Karina should be, Steph has actually prepared some findings of approval, sort of to help with that in the event that the planning commission was inclined to approve the project. And we can pull those, I think. Can you all see these?
Yeah.
So these are suggested findings of approval. Obviously, the commissioners can have a discussion and modify them as necessary.
Is it possible to make this larger, one, by potentially reducing the toolbar? And two, give me a little bit more zoom on it?
Through the chair, I believe you can actually control your own zoom above the pictures.
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I think we can figure out how to zoom in, but I can also read them aloud. I have the copy open with me here.
And let me check in with Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Kennedy, this is the path you would like to take with the assistance from staff?
Yes. Yes. I would.
Okay, there we go. Zoomed in a little bit. So.
So we're looking at one, five.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
So we are looking particularly at action five or action four and five?
We would be. We would be looking at action two, actually. So I can, yeah, and I'll read them aloud right now. So action two, make finding, make the following findings as per section 16.82.30340 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to the approval of the variance for the construction of an attached ADU in the front setback. A. The property is severely sloped in much of the buildable area on the lot. Most of the usable area has been developed with the existing residence and other built features, including built-in barbecue and fire pit facilities, leaving little room for compliant construction of an ADU. For this reason, there does not appear to be a reasonable and feasible alternative to the proposed development, creating a hardship peculiar to the property not created by the owner. And if you have any changes you would like to make to that finding?
Commissioner Cale? Excuse me, Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, no, I'm trying to find some language.
Okay. So then moving on to finding B. Prior to billing permit, sorry, that was the next page. Finding, finding B. A reduced front setback to allow an ADU within the front setback would not constitute a special privilege for the owners as the topography and existing development of the parcel leave little room for compliant construction of ADU. The proposed variance is not there.
Commissioner Kennedy, can you just mute yourself for a moment to see if that's you? Okay, come on, come on back. Can you hear us, Commissioner Kennedy? We can't hear you.
Yeah, my headphones, my headphones died, so I'm trying to figure out how to hear you guys better.
Okay. We can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, so we would be changing the language to negate two A through E, correct?
C and E, I don't believe, change at all. The findings that would be changing would be A, B, and D.
So for two A, if we added a sentence stating that, right after the last sentence, or starting with, there is sufficient room. If we amended those, the following, the sentence to say, while there is sufficient room to construct an attached ADU on the left side of the garage, and the existing garage could also be converted to an ADU without the need to replace the parking on site, that option is unfeasible and creates a particular, creates, results in the lack of a seamless transition from the ADU to the main house, which you are, we're allowing the premise that this is, this particular ADU would be used for an aged parent having to walk on unstable surfaces or making the trip longer to get from the ADU to the main house is a hardship. Would that, would that suffice?
This is for finding two A. So in the, in the zoning ordinance, the finding states that a hardship peculiar to the property and not created by any act of the owner exists. In this context, personal, family, or financial difficulties, loss of prospective profits, and neighboring violations are not hardship justifying a variance. So I don't believe we would want to include in the finding.
Right, right. Okay. Right, right, okay.
The need to be able to transition between the units.
Right. So what if we changed that the property is sloped and includes trees and built features that do constitute a hardship? So that's, that's pretty simple and straightforward and direct response to this first sentence.
And through that chair, if I may add, so these findings, as far as staff is concerned, are fine for an approval. So, the commissioners may add something if they choose, but, I mean, we crafted these for an approval. So, if the commission believes they're sufficient, then we don't need to change them.
Okay. We can't hear you, Andrew.
Thank you for that. There are, there's two sets, so there's the findings that are in the packet, and then there's these findings which were drafted in the event that the commission was leaning towards or made a motion towards findings. So this is an affirmative finding. 2 is pertaining to the approval of the variance. So, if the, if the content here is intellectually truthful to what it is, is being done on the property, then this could stand to being voted on as is without any revisions, if you wanted to go that route, for findings for the variance. So, is it, is it a correct statement, Commissioner Kennedy, that this is, this is meets your approval for?
Yes.
For that? And I'll look to the, the second round this was Commissioner Doran, so I'll look to you for approval, recognition of these as well.
Yeah, I think the findings are acceptable. I might have drafted a little bit differently, but I think I'm perfectly prepared to take the advice of staff. If these things are adequate, I'm happy with them.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I've had ample time to read this statement 2A. And it's essentially, correct me if I'm reading this incorrectly, but it says, "The site has been developed with various features, creating a hardship that was not created by an owner." That seems to be contrary unto itself unless it's a clean slate when you buy a property and then you can apply for a variance. So, through the chair, I guess I'd need to ask Mr. Turner, is that the case? If you buy a property that's not conforming, do you get to start over and say, "Well, gee, I didn't do it, so I need a variance?"
Not necessarily. Zoning regulations, setback regulations are not a clean slate when you buy a property. So technically, any new development would need to conform to setback regulations, which is why the variance is being requested, if that was the question.
And if I may, yes. Yeah, if I may add something through the chair. I think in this, it's reasonable to say that the current owner didn't design the layout of the lot and how it's built. So I think it is reasonable to include that as, as one of the finding, as part of the finding A.
All right, I will take that, that is new information to me. I will take that as advice that we can make a decision on. Thank you, Ms. Sandymire.
Commissioner Doran?
If it's acceptable to Commissioner Kennedy, I would propose, in addition to the finding in 2A, which might satisfy Commissioner Riggs, I think there's a hardship not created by the owner by the amendment of the zoning ordinance after the house had been built. And we could add that to the end of 2A.
If I may make a comment through the chair again. As far as we know, the zoning ordinance has not changed since the house was built, so we wouldn't want to add that as a, as part of the finding.
Thank you. Commissioner, I think Commissioner Riggs, you were up again?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to note that since staff had offered, there is a process to change from Crest Lane as the front, in terms of zoning, to Warner Ranch, then actually, the zoning is not limiting this, as I see it, as the site plan layout. If, if it's changed, then the that adds land on the Crest Lane side and takes it away from the Warner Ridge range line. And so now, the garage is over the line. This was a decision that the architect would have made, whether it was 1962, or 1982, or 2019. You kind of can't have it both ways. So I wouldn't be able to support the fact that the zoning is an impact here. I, I do have a great deal of sympathy here because once you have invested money in landscaping, such as the retaining wall that the, these owners just put in, I think they said three or four years ago, and a very nice retaining wall, and a very extensive retaining wall, that now you find you want a different use for your buildable area, and you would have put your fire pit maybe 15 feet further north. So, then that would be frustrating. It would be possible to relocate the garage, not entirely, but partially forward up until the setback. It would be an interesting revision in terms of a Cape Cod, but not entirely unheard of, and it would free up space in the rear, space that is currently just a blind wall for the garage on one side and potentially on the left side as well. But the solutions involved in taking this house on this quarter acre lot with this topography, and I'll say that nearly every lot that I've looked at in Sharon Heights has a slope to it, and often a rather dramatic slope. It does force the expenditure of more money than simply building on flat land. I'm not coming to the conclusion necessarily that I'm not in support of this applicant's efforts, but it does make it increasingly difficult to make the findings.
Commissioner Kennedy, you were up a moment ago and you dropped off. Do you not wish to speak?
No, I'm, I'm good for the moment.
Okay, then I saw Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I would just like to echo my support in principle to the discussion led by Commissioner Doran and the reasons for supporting the variance as opposed to the denial, and also support the laudable efforts of Commissioners Doran and Kennedy to find a pathway through. For me, I would support it because we have the ADU law from the state, the spirit of which is clear, and I can understand the concerns raised by commissioners about precedent. But in this instance, for me, what tips it is the law and the guidance we have about ADUs. And it would be a shame to me that we can't find a pathway forward to grant this variance over what is essentially 14 inches of the corner of a garage. And while I appreciate that the language and the complication of getting to that may be difficult, I appreciate the efforts of Kennedy and Doran, and I'd be ready to support this language as stands or other language that gets the same result.
Thank you. Commissioner Doran?
Well, I, as I said, would like to approve this tonight, and I am happy with the findings, the alternate findings that's presented by the staff. But I just wanted to suggest to my fellow commissioners that if they're not inclined to approve this tonight, that rather than denying it, we continue it so we can look into the question of when the zoning ordinance was amended. The applicant made the statement in their application. It was the first question I asked of staff at the outset of this, and was told that we didn't know the answer to that. So I think in the absence of any evidence to the contrary, that we believe the applicant. And then Ms. Sandymire added the information much later in the process, after we've heard from the applicant, that the zoning ordinance hadn't been amended after the house was built. So I think there's a question of fact there that would be worth investigating if you're not inclined to approve this tonight. I'm inclined in favor of doing it tonight with the findings as written by, the alternate findings as written by the staff.
Question to Ms. Sandymire. Are you definitive in your statement that the zoning, the front of the property has not changed, the designated front?
I haven't done all the research myself, but I believe that's accurate. So next, at the next planning commission meeting, we only have one item, so we could continue this item if the planning commission would like.
Ms. Tate, Commissioner Tate?
Hi, Chair Barnes. I would support passing this tonight instead of continuing it to another meeting. I'm not sure who, right now, I think it's like four of us who are in favor. I'm not sure about everyone else, but I'd prefer not to continue if we don't have to.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Tate. I think that it is, it just pushes the, it just pushes the ball down the field for real note, for really no substantive reason. I think we have enough information, and I think we are going to continue to see projects like this more and more. And, you know, buying some time, I don't think is going to do the, do the applicant any justice. And honestly, it lets us a little bit off the hook, and I'd really like us to be on the hook.
Thank you. Procedurally, we have the motion on the floor, and to review it, it is to approve the variance with the findings, as the alternate findings that's presented, and to approve the use permit relative to the construction of a seven-foot fence. And I'll look for any other additional commissioner comments before calling for a vote. And then should that fail, then I suspect there'll be discussions about continuing, not to continue from there. So looking for any other commissioner comments before I call for a vote. Seeing no other commissioners with comments, I'll proceed to call a vote, and I'm going to do it in alphabetical order again for, for this item on, Commissioner DeCarty?
Apologies, I was just waiting.
I'm sorry?
I was just waiting, I was gonna go first, I would apologize.
Oh, right, you, you are, you are first after, after the B for Barnes, yes. So, I'll call for a vote in, in order, and what I will look for is, I'll call it, and then please indicate by voice and by thumb your vote, so I can be clear on what it is. And then I'll read through it after a final tabulation. And if there are any discrepancies, then we'll review it at that time. So, starting with Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty is a yes. Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
Commissioner Doran is a yes. Commissioner Cale?
I'm a no.
Commissioner Cale is a no. Commissioner Kennedy?
I'm a yes.
Commissioner Kennedy is a yes. Commissioner Riggs?
On technical reasons only, I'll vote no. Yes, no.
Commissioner Riggs is a no. Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate is a yes, and Barnes is a yes, bringing the final tally of Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Kennedy, Tate voting yes, Cale and Riggs voting no. The project passes as, as approved, as discussed and approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, we will proceed to the next item on this evening's agenda. This is item F2. This is the use permit for 1465 Bay Laurel Drive. It's a request for a use permit to demolish an existing, single-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage, and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage in a basement on a substandard lot with regard to lot width in the R1S, Single Family Suburban Residential Zoning District. And with that, I will say, good evening to, hold on, tell me, good evening to Mr. Paz.
Good evening, Chair Barnes. Staff has no updates to the report at this time, but we are available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any clarifying questions for staff relative to the staff report? Seeing no commissioner questions, we'll proceed now to the applicant, and look to the applicant for their project presentation. Good evening, please tell us your name, introduce yourself, and tell us about your project, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Steve Simpson, and I'm the project architect. I'll try to do this kind of low-tech, because I'm not quite sure how to go through the drawings. But essentially, we're here tonight But essentially, we're here tonight because it's a non-conforming lot with respect to width. And that width is in the rear of the property. We kind of have a pie-shaped inverted, I would call it inverted pie-shaped lot. So it's very wide in the front and narrow in the back. And as it gets to the back, we're 75 feet of width where 80 is required. We're about 126 feet in the front where 80 is required. And the property size is 17,000 square feet, which is also well over the 10,000 minimum that's required. So anyway, just wanted to make that clear. We're here because of the width of the back, in the back of the property. But with that said, I, we, the house itself is kind of a, I'm, we've got it, we've got it in front of you here. The architectural style is kind of a transitional style, but with some kind of English country DNA in it. And we've tried to break the massing up and articulated in a way that I think will fit in nice with the neighborhood. The neighborhood's kind of varied in its pattern. But a combination of two-story and one-story houses, I think largely two-story. Beyond that, we've got, there's a little pool house in the back that's right up against the creek. The lot backs up to the creek. We've got a pretty good-sized pool. Our client is a swimmer. And that explains a slightly bigger-than-normal pool. We've tried to orient the house. It's kind of an L shape. And there's some really nice redwoods in the back, both on the kind of southeast side and the east side, that we've kind of tried to feature with the way that the house opens up to that. And, you know, beyond that, I'm not quite sure where to get into more detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you all may have.
Thank you. Looking to the Commissioners for any questions for the applicant. Commissioner Cale?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Is there a band over the garage that continues over the mudroom entry?
Yes, there's a, it's a, it's a band of stucco. And our intention there is to have the stucco flush with the stone. So we would build out the stucco to kind of be in plain with the stone with just a control joint there. But there is, and that, and that stucco band follows across the garage, the mudroom entrance, and also over the, what we've done is kind of a front, there's a covered front porch, kind of a more modern version of a covered front porch that would have the same detail.
Okay. I'd say it's a very nice design. The only little things that the garage seems a little asymmetrical. So I don't know what you could do about that. My only thought was maybe instead of having that stucco band, maybe it's all stone or something to really set it apart. But that's just a suggestion. My second, or other question is, did you, did the owners consider an ADU, adding an ADU to the property?
My question.
We haven't discussed that. The lot's fairly, the property's fairly constrained as it gets narrower in the back. And with the side improvements we already have in terms of pool and small cabana and the, and the redwoods, which actually are also an issue, the creek setback, there's not a lot of room here for it. But we have not discussed it.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other Commissioner comments, I will now turn and open this up for public comment. And I'll look to Mr. Tapia for indications of whether we have anyone in queue.
Thank you, Chair Barnes. Again, for those who are attending the meeting and have a comment or question relative to this item, there is a hand icon on your control panel, which you can click on to notify a member of staff. Or alternatively, you can use the question field to type in your question or comment, and a member of staff can read that aloud. And at this time, Chair Barnes, it does appear that there is a comment from a member of the public.
Someone looking to provide comment via telephone?
That is correct. I believe they also typed in their question, but it looks like the question came in first, and then they chose to activate the hand icon. If I may clarify, it looks like the hand icon is gone. If, if you'd like, I can read the question that they initially posed.
Yes, please.
The question verbatim is, can you show a site plan? I believe that's referencing the presentation that was given.
Yeah, and let me check in with Ms. Sandmeyer. Just from a procedural standpoint, it's not customary to take questions specifically from public comment. But given the format that we have, it's digital. You have any thoughts on that? So in the absence, there she is. Be with us.
I have a comment that's written in, kind of carries the same weight as a spoken comment. So I think it's fine to proceed to the site plan.
Right. I mean, I, I don't, it does carry the same weight as spoken. Just generally speaking, public comment is not a back-and-forth situation. Take a public comment and bring it. Okay, I'll make our decision. So please go ahead, Mr. Simpson, with the site plan and show that.
Okay, I'm trying to scroll up here. Now, that's a site plan showing the neighboring properties. That might be more helpful. I'm not quite sure where the question is going. We also have a site plan showing just the, the site itself. But maybe I should leave it here and see if, if this site plan showing where my cursor is, is the proposed house, and these are the adjacent, showing the location of the adjacent houses.
Okay.
That might give it more context than just the site plan alone.
Thank you. Mr. Tapia, I see that, is it Mr. Newt Barr that has the question mark? And is that question mark for this, is it a new question as a follow-up to the site plan?
Yes, the question that you're seeing in your question field inbox is the question that I read aloud.
Okay. Then we'll re-close the question, or if there's any other questions for public comment, please offer them now. Seeing no other questions, and confirm that, please, Mr. Tapia, there's no other questions?
That is correct, Chair Barnes.
Okay. So given that there is no other questions, I will close this and bring it back up. Say thank you to Mr. Simpson and bring it back up to the dais for Commissioner discussion and a motion. Commissioner Cale?
Thank you. Basically, it's a, it's a very handsome design. It's great proportions and massing. Materials are really nice, too. So it's, it's fully supportable. My only minor issue is with the garage, just feels a little unbalanced, but it's minor. And I wish there was an ADU just for housing. But otherwise, it's a great design. And I'll make a motion to approve the application per the staff report.
We have a first from Commissioner Cale. Commissioner Kennedy?
I second.
We've got a first from Kennedy and, excuse me, a first from Cale, a second from Kennedy. Looking for any other Commissioner comments on this project? Seeing no other comments, I'll proceed to call for a vote, and we'll do it in alphabetical order, starting from Mr. DeCarty. Mr. DeCarty, that's a yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
It's a big yes. Commissioner Cale?
Yes.
That's a yes. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
That is a yes. Commissioner Riggs? That's a thumbs up.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tate? That is a yes. And Barnes is a yes as well. Let the record show that it's Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Cale, Kennedy, Riggs, and Tate, all voting yes. It's unanimous. Project is approved. Thank you for coming this evening. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So that takes us to the second part of our project agenda this evening. And this is for, we'll move to regular business, G on the agenda. And we are at G1. This is an architectural control for 870 Santa Cruz Avenue. It's a request for Architectural Control to modify the exterior of an existing two-story commercial building in the SPECRD, El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. The building would be comprehensively updated with stucco composite wood, metal panels, new windows, a glass span drill, along with floors and a new color scheme. The existing first and second floors would be reconfigured to incorporate a minor building modulation inset along the, along the front and rear elevations. And the building would provide rooftop access, but the gross floor area would not increase as part of the project. With that, we will look to Mr. Pruder. Good evening. Mr. Pruder is the staff lead on this project.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and Commissioners. I have two announcements for this evening's item at 870 Santa Cruz Avenue. The first of which, I'm also accompanied tonight by Mr. Arnold Mamarella. He's our design review consultant. If you have additional questions regarding design and materials choices for the project from a staff perspective, he can assist with that. In addition, we received two comments, public comments, that came in after the publication of the staff report, which I can read aloud now. They were emailed to you after the publication of the staff report, but I'm reading them now for the benefit of the public. And I will get those on the screen shortly. Sorry to the chair, if I could get assistance from staff to either be able to share my screen or have the comment letters presented below me, please. Okay, thank you for that, staff. So the first of the comments was provided by Allison Johnston, and it reads, Dear Mr. Pruder, I am writing to you in support of this project. Just one moment. Okay, sorry about that. I am writing to you in support of this project and ask that you forward this letter to the planning commission as they consider this project on June 8, 2020. This project will be an asset to our community in that it promotes and supports our city's goals as outlined in the Downtown Specific Plan, specifically as they pertain to the goals of revitalizing underutilized parcels and buildings, expand shopping, dining, and neighborhood services to ensure a vibrant downtown and maintain a village character unique to Menlo Park. This project will revitalize an existing building to allow for new uses while still being in context with weight, height, excuse me, height, massing, and scale of the adjacent downtown buildings. This project has the right attributes to benefit the downtown and the city as a whole since it includes the following components. Revitalization of an existing building. Revitalization of an existing building by opening up the solid mass of the building with windows that will provide increased light and visibility into the building. This enhancement will allow for the inclusion of high-quality space without having to construct a building from the ground up, resulting in a shorter construction timeline. Sustainable, high-quality design. A sustainable and attractive building that provides for high-quality design at a prominent location along Santa Cruz Avenue. The proposed materials, including wood, stucco, and glass, will provide a new identity for the building, and it will also enhance the existing streetscape. Pedestrian-friendly design. Increased visibility into the building will allow for the engagement of pedestrians along Santa Cruz Avenue. Mixed-use building will provide for retail and office uses as allowed for the Downtown Specific Plan. Investment, tax, and fee generation. Development of the project will result in the payment of additional fees and taxes to the city, which is a benefit to the city during these uncertain times. Transit proximity. Office uses that are proximate to transit within 0.5 miles walking distance of the Menlo Park train station and with direct access to retail and dining amenities. TDM plan, that is Transit Demand Management Plan. That reduces overall vehicle trips and includes subsidized transit tickets for employees. I encourage the planning commission to support this project for our city. Sincerely, Allison Johnston, 1280 Garden Lane, Menlo Park. Excuse me. And the second letter of correspondence we received was from Kate Powers, who writes, I'll zoom this in as well, just one moment. Hello, Matt. I wanted to express my support for the new development at 870 Santa Cruz Avenue. The project will benefit downtown Menlo Park in many ways. Revitalization of an existing building. Revitalization of an existing building by opening up solid mass of the building with windows that will provide increased light and visibility into the building. This enhancement will allow for the inclusion of high-quality space without having to construct a building from the ground up, resulting in a shorter construction timeline. Sustainable, high-quality design. A sustainable and attractive building that provides for a high-quality design at a prominent location along Santa Cruz Avenue. The proposed materials, including wood, stucco, and glass, will provide a new identity for the building and will also enhance the existing streetscape. Pedestrian-friendly design. Increased visibility into the building will allow for the engagement of pedestrians along Santa Cruz Avenue. Mixed-use building will provide for retail and office uses as allowed for the Downtown Specific Plan. Investment, tax, and fee generation. Development of the project will result in the payment of additional fees and taxes to the city, which is a benefit to the city during these uncertain times. I encourage the planning commission to support this project for our city. Best regards, Katharina Powers, Art Ventures Gallery, 888 Santa Cruz Avenue, Menlo Park, California, 94025, and a website of www.artventuregallery.com. And that is all for now from staff's end. If you have any questions, we are available at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pruder? Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I have a question about the shade canopies. There's a mention in the staff report that, that they are there, but it, I got the impression that they weren't, that the report wasn't sufficiently impressed that there was enough of them. I was wondering if you, Matt, or maybe Arnold, could, could expand on that a little bit?
Sure, this is Arnold Mamarella. I'll expand a little bit on that. Hello, Commissioners. The Downtown Specific Plan has a number of guidelines. And one of them, it talks about shade canopies. Other ones talk about breeze alleys and other things. And I think when we looked at-
Other ones talk about breeze alleys and other things, and I think when we looked at it, we were looking at it relative to overall similar projects and the degree of those canopies. And there are two canopies at each side of the building at the entries, but overall, there's not canopies at storefronts. And overall, there's not canopies on the upper levels that would provide additional shade either for the windows or shade for people walking down the street. So for 100-foot wide lot, we felt that there were some of those elements, but we didn't have as much of them as we might hope in other cases.
And if I could, to the Chair.
Yes, please.
Is there sufficient room to add those? I mean, in regard to the front property line, there's no issue in adding canopies or making them deeper?
No, the specific plan allows those to occur. They can occur, I believe, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, just, I think, up to six feet, as long as there are eight feet over the sidewalk. So there is allowance within the specific plan to increase the size of the canopies. There is one limitation, though. Where the canopy is used within the modulation, staff has determined that the canopy cannot overlap the size of the modulation, because the modulation has to be uninterrupted, top to bottom. So in other words, you can't have a broad or canopy. You have to have some space between the end of the canopy and the modulation.
Okay. And in your review, does this satisfy the offsets that we need to have? I see three-foot offsets and one-foot offsets. Are those sufficient to meet the specific plan requirements?
Yes, this project is 100 feet wide and it requires one minor modulation. And it does have that, and the modulation is actually about almost four times as wide as you need to do and a little bit deeper. The modulation only has to be two feet deep by five feet wide, and theirs is, I think, almost 20 feet wide by, I believe, three feet deep. So it is clearly meeting that standard.
Okay, and last question. I was wondering if there was an issue with the shared lobby entrance on the right on Santa Cruz. The staff report, it mentions something like perhaps it's a little too tall at eight feet, eight inches, and I didn't quite follow that comment. Is there any issue or comment on that?
I'm not sure exactly what, where in the staff report it says referring, that's referred to. Maybe Matt might know, but I'm not sure if there's any issue with that lobby itself not meeting a requirement. I think just the the overhead canopies have to be a minimum of eight feet above is the only thing I'm thinking, but maybe there's something else that you're getting to that Matt can answer.
I'm just curious if there is something in the report that's being alluded to that I don't understand.
Hmm, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Question for, I'll go to Mr. Mamorilla first. Good evening. Good to see you again. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
As I, as I look through the staff report, and I'm looking at page five onward, and there's a number of these guidelines, starting with E 3.5, 08, and then there's maybe six of these. And after the guideline, there is the narrative which talks to partially complies. So for instance, you've got a guideline, and then there's the amount or the the compliance narrative. In the past, when you've had projects that come down the downtown specific plan, and knowing that the downtown specific plan is fairly prescriptive in terms of what needs to happen from an architectural standpoint, is there a benchmark that you use, which you say, okay, partially complies means it, just speaking numerically, it's greater than a five out of 10. Therefore, it's an acceptable partial compliance versus a non-acceptable partial compliance. And how did you, in fact, look at things that were partially complied and say, yeah, that'll work? What was the methodology behind that?
Thank you for the question. I think when we have a standard and they're very numeric, it's more, you know, it either does comply or it doesn't comply, and the standards are the ones where, you know, the height or the depth of things like that have to comply to those numerics. But with the guidelines, it's really more about an attitude of of what do you need to get the project that you want for your downtown, considering the things that we've heard from the past? And by noting it's partially complies, what we're looking at is, you can look at it maybe from one direction or another. It maybe doesn't comply at the fullest level, but it does comply somewhat on some ways. So I think your five of 10 is a good way of looking at it, that if it's somewhere in that neighborhood or a little bit more, we might say it partially complies. If it's seriously below that, we might say that it probably doesn't comply, but the guidelines are there to give you a little bit of discretion here, has to look at this particular project, how important is this particular guideline being implemented to make this project work? So in other words, for those few ones we have there, like, some of them, they have, like, for the individual storefronts, defined as bays, they are meeting the 20-foot standard, but you don't see a very repetitive or clearly defined storefront. So that's why you might look at that as partially defined, because it complies, because they're not wider than 20 feet, but they don't have that clearly repetitive bay or clearly repetitive storefront that they show in the specific plan with this guideline and the illustrations that that go with the guideline on that page of the specific plan.
So it's fair to say that these partial compliances are acceptable, partial compliances, rooted in your knowledge, in your work, in the evolution of the downtown specific plan and what was trying to be achieved. Is that correct?
I think it's fair to say that there's enough in the design that you can look at the design and say that it's consistent with the guidelines, but it's also fair to say that we put them in the staff report, because we thought these are things that you should look at and and consider for yourself has, is the application of these guidelines done in a manner that meets the intention of the specific plan? And the, is there end result, will it be something that will work well for that particular location? And one of the things I think that weighed heavily on our minds in this particular project was it's a, the frontage is 100 feet wide. So most of the buildings on either side are half that frontage. So here you have a much wider frontage. And also typically with a new building, you'd have a 15-foot minimum height to the second floor, and here it's a little bit shallower at about 13. So those are the things that were sort of considered, and that's why staff chose to put this information, so that you would have more information. I remember from other projects, there was a lot of discussion of what type of response would really work well in a downtown environment, especially along Santa Cruz Avenue. So we wanted to provide adequate information for your further discussion and your consideration in whatever decision that you make.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And this next question is for Mr. Pruder in the staff report specifically. Thank you. In the, on page two in the project description, it calls out that, in addition, project description, second sentence, "In addition to interior renovations and redevelop the existing two-story retail building to provide retail use on the ground floor, non-medical on the second floor, and roof deck for ground floor retail use." The way this is, the nomenclature you're using in the staff report for retail, is that also inclusive of food and beverage? Or is it intended to be, for instance, you know, hard goods retail? Is there any distinction in that term?
Thank you for your question, Chair Barnes. My understanding is that the retail decision has not been finalized, and I'm referring to the applicant to, if they're able to elaborate more on that specifically, what kind of retail use is intended. My understanding is that it is not intended to be a food and beverage type of establishment, such as a restaurant or something along those lines. My recollection earlier in the discussion with the applicant was checking to see if there was an intention to have some kind of restaurant service. I believe the other issue was if alcohol was to be provided, we would need that as additional approval, of course. And so my understanding is that it is not a food and beverage type of retail establishment. They're hoping to have as part of this development, but I would like to yield that question to the applicant team to clarify further. But that's my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, those are my two. I'll look to I'll look to any of fellow commissioners for questions before I move to the applicant. Seeing no other questions, I am inviting the applicant to come and tell us about your project. Good evening. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you Commissioners for your time and consideration of our project at 870 Santa Cruz. My name is Todd Speaker, and I'm with Windy Hill Property Ventures. Windy Hill Property Ventures is a local developer headquartered in Palo Alto. We specialize in residential and commercial projects typically located in amenity-rich and transit-oriented locations similar to 870 Santa Cruz. We have experience working with cities such as San Mateo, Redwood City, Belmont, Palo Alto, and San Carlos, and have had projects approved in those cities within the last few years. Slide. Our vision for this project is simple. We see an opportunity to take an older, well-located existing building and renovate it and revitalize it by making it more pedestrian-friendly and implementing TDM measures and doing this using sustainable building measures. We are excited to make this investment in downtown Menlo Park. Slide. So we started working on this project in July of last year. We worked closely with the Flegos family, longtime property owner in downtown Menlo Park, and through working with them and our architect and consultants, we were able to submit an application to the city in November of last year. Since then, we've worked closely with staff throughout the review process. We've responded to several rounds of comments from the design consultant, had multiple in-person design coordination meetings with staff and supervisor, had two Zoom design coordination meetings with staff and design consultant. We distributed outreach notice with the project information and request for feedback to adjacent properties. The changes that we've made to the design, we've incorporated modulation in the center of facade per the specific plan, a defined office entry. We've further recessed the entries, enhanced canopies at retail and office entries. We've reduced building floor area to match existing area. Increased material transition to clearly defined bays. I will now pass this on to our architect to complete the presentation, but I am available should you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Good evening Chair Barnes, Commissioners. My name's Evan Sokolowski with ArchTech. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We're very excited, as Todd said, about the project, and think both the architecture and the project itself will have a very positive impact on downtown Menlo Park. Slide. The project is centrally located in the downtown core on Santa Cruz Avenue in an existing vacant building of approximately 23,000 square feet. Not only does the project successfully maintain existing trees, but an interesting feature is our project actually reduces the parking load in the area. Our TDM consultant is available if you have further questions on this item. As shown in these photos, downtown Menlo Park includes a wide variety of architectural styles in both one- and two-story buildings. There is no single style that we believe defines the village character, but rather the variety that creates the unique pedestrian experience of Menlo Park. Our project 870 embraces the very village character of downtown and fits strongly within that fabric. As discussed, this is an existing building and being revitalized. And there is no additional area being added. The project has two frontages, both on Santa Cruz and on the interior parking, which is a unique feature for Menlo Park. This allows us to activate both sides of the building. Next. Retail on the first floor with a separate entry for the office. Office space on the second, and then the roof deck. As Todd mentioned, we worked closely with staff and the design consultant throughout the design process, and we're really excited. We think the architecture speaks for itself and really will bring a vibrant project to the downtown area. The rendering on the screen actually shows the design without the existing street trees, so you could focus on some of the unique architectural details. The design uses clean, modern forms, transforming the existing heavy, solid, massive building into an open, engaging, and pedestrian-friendly mixed-use project. Varying materials and details, including stucco, glass, manufactured wood, metal panels, create focus at the pedestrian level, while the aforementioned prominent canopies create an accent at the distinct office and retail entries. As I spoke before, the backside into the interior parking has also been carefully designed. It mimics the street facade, and the same care and detail on both facades is present. The side-by-side elevations here are just helping to represent how the two sides relate to each other, both responding very well to both the standards and guidelines as discussed in the downtown specific plan. So through all the work with staff, we've really appreciated their input, their collaboration with us to get the design to where it is today. We also really appreciate their support in this project, and we are excited to get this moving forward under construction to bring this project to fruition and attract new tenants and businesses to downtown Menlo. As Todd mentioned, we're available for further questions, both on the design as well as any of the other points mentioned in the staff report. Thank you.
Chair Barnes, your audio is not enabled.
Sorry about that. Thank you. I'll look to my fellow commissioners for any clarifying questions related to the presentation. Commissioner Cale.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions about the roof deck. Will that be a new structure that you need to build to make that work?
The roof deck is just on the existing roof. We're doing some slight reinforcement for the load, but otherwise it's just over the existing structure.
Okay, and I see it's fairly substantial, so I'm just curious about the use of it, and you may not be able to answer this, but if this was a, if it's not a eating dining establishment, I'm trying to picture how this space will be used by, I don't know, a clothing store or something. How would this space be utilized?
And you're right. It's a hard question to answer at this point. We're looking at it as a unique amenity space that is flexible, and it's meant to attract high-end tenants, and Todd can speak to this further, but giving them the flexibility to use it in a variety of ways.
Yeah, as Evan just said, we just want to, you know, we're, the earlier question by Chair Barnes about what kind of a retail establishment, I mean, we're open. You know, obviously, the world has changed over the last few months, and
I mean, we're open. You know, obviously, the world has changed over the last few months, and we need to adjust with it. So, you know, once you decide to put a roof deck up there, it doesn't really cost that much more to make it larger, and so we want to be able to accommodate any group that can use it. And I think it just adds to the vibrancy of a downtown, so.
Let me, let me put it this way. Say the first floor is some retail space that doesn't use the roof deck in a tremendous way. Would this be a space that'd be open to the general public? Say someone could go up there and eat their lunch or something, or is it tied specifically to the retail space?
It would be tied to the building. This would not be for public use. No.
Okay. Okay. And then regarding the shade canopies, even with the modulations, it's a very handsome building. But as I say, even with the modulations, I'm trying to understand how that reads, how flat that is. And I think the, maybe that's because it is so long. But I was wondering if you would be open to adding some shade canopies in some manner to help with the depth and add some shadow and shading to the building?
Todd, I can speak to this. So we, we looked at two different elements on this, on the ground floor. We actually looked at the depth being both in the projecting canopies at the entry and the inset picture windows at the retail, kind of creating a focus of picture windows or display windows there. So we were looking at developing depth along those lines as opposed to putting additional projection on the ground floor. On the upper floor, the guidelines specifically speak to the flexibility of controlling sunlight into the space. And our initial concern is because of the office use on the upper floor and the significant depth of the building, we wanted to provide as much light and sunlight into that office space to attract tenants as we could. Obviously, adding additional shading cuts down on that natural light reaching those tenants. So our initial design, which we think is very successful cleanly, creates very wide-open windows. But we've also looked at creating additional solar shades at the upper levels. We can share that with you, but we feel as a design and as something responding to the guidelines, it does not need it, and it doesn't improve the design and cuts down on some of the natural light.
So you don't think the two skylights would be adequate for bringing enough light into the center of the office area?
Skylights always bring in a different type of light. So obviously, it will bring the light into the center, but again, having the light coming in off the street and the significant windows, we felt was important to that tenant experience that we're seeing in these types of users.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question for staff and Mr. Pruder. This is a downtown specific plan. It's a use question. So getting back to the designation within the downtown specific plan for retail uses, and it appears as though retail use can be anything that is, for instance, non-residential, non-office, right? So say they wanted to use this as an event space. If it's a wide-open ground floor space, could they use this? Does the downtown specific plan allow for use as a rented-out event space? Do you know that?
If I may just have a moment to look at the specific plan carefully, I just want to make sure I have a clearly defined answer for you, Chair Barnes. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I believe that, and I welcome staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the type of use that you're proposing would be defined under the public semi-public and service use classifications in the appendix, sorry, Chapter H of the specific plan, which refers to a club-and-lodge type use. And that would involve a definition being meeting recreational or social facilities of a private or nonprofit organization primarily for use by members or guests, including residential accommodations that are available to members or guests on a temporary basis for periods of less than 30 consecutive days, but excluding residential hotels. This classification includes union halls and social clubs. And there are other types of institutions that fall into this category. Is that kind of what you're getting at in terms of an event space? Could you clarify a little more what that would constitute or may constitute?
Yeah, I'm thinking about this, this open space, and I'm thinking about the, you know, the use as, for instance, a corporate event space, right? So you've got this open space, you've got an undesigned ground floor, and you've got a rooftop up top. Just from a zoning perspective, could you put a corporate event space in there where you would be leasing out the space on a regular basis for people to throw whatever? Launch parties, dinner parties, events, weddings, whatever?
Sure, there may be some caveats to all of those types of activities, but generally speaking, what you're describing does seem to relate to what I just defined, and that would be considered a conditional use in this particular land use designation, and therefore it would require a use permit outright for the use because it's conditional.
And then that would come under a separate application. And administratively, if they're not calling out the use now and they wanted to use it as a corporate event space, they'd come back for a few at a later date. Is that how that would work?
Yes, Chair Barnes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. So I'll look for any other commissioner comments, and if I see none, I will proceed to call for public comment on this particular item. Mr. Tapia, can you guide us on that?
Yes, thank you, Chair Barnes. So for members of the public who are joining us, again, there is a control panel on your screen, and there is a hand icon which you could activate by clicking on, and that would notify a member of staff that you do have a comment or question at this time relative to this item. Additionally, there is a question field in your control panel, which you could use to type in a question or comment, and then a member of staff can read that comment or question aloud.
Is it safe to say we have no?
That is correct, Chair Barnes. There are no comments or questions being posed at this time.
So with that in mind, I will close public comment on this issue, on this item, and bring it back up to the virtual dials for commission discussion and ultimately a motion. Commissioner Cale.
I'll jump in. I just, I think it's a well-designed project, much needed in downtown. The second-floor deck is a little undefined for me, but hopefully that will be put to good use and not be something that was sort of an afterthought. And I think that the adding shades is personally maybe a missed opportunity to just make this long facade work a little bit better. But that all said, I think it's a great project, and I would support any motion to approve it.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. Really, the first thing I've got to say about this project is it's not only functionally superior, but it will be a significant improvement to Santa Cruz Avenue. While the furniture store served its purpose, moving forward, this is this is a jump that looks like more than the 35 years that it represents. That said, I can't help but try to look for the same goals as we have for all of our Santa Cruz Avenue projects. Santa Cruz Avenue is our main street. It's our best face for Menlo Park. And we do not have a history of terrific late 40s, early 50s architecture on this street. Virtually all the other peninsula cities have pre-war architecture that they can lean on for some charm. We are probably as much indebted to the local effort to plant trees as we are to any past buildings of the former era. So taking this opportunity, having already sort of shown my hand that I would support this project, I can't help but note that this is either the fourth or the fifth time where our well-intended but unfortunate modulation code in the specific plan. And I was there at its formation, and I missed what it might potentially do. This is the fourth or fifth time where we have virtually the same massing presented to us for approval, which is two boxes connected by a recessed raised panel, something with no architectural reference, probably because it doesn't have a lot of architectural, it doesn't add anything architecturally. And I did want to ask the architect if that guideline that continues to haunt our projects affected their design. I should have said, if I may through the chair, ask the architect.
Great. Mr. Sokolowski.
Commissioner Riggs, thank you for your question. Regarding the modulation, our project faced a unique challenge in that it is 100 feet in width, and the requirements of that modulation strictly dictate that at 50 feet, you need to have the minor modulation. That, in our working back and forth with staff, we looked at different elements and ways to try and address it. And basically, in meeting that requirement, we had to have it at the center of our building. And so that was where we were tied to the strict guidelines on that standard in order to make it at a center feature, which you're saying you've seen before.
Yes, we have at least four times and perhaps five, depending on whether one, two blocks down moves ahead as designed. I can only speak for myself at this point, but if you wanted to propose an alternative to the, as you noted, rather strictly phrased requirement for the minor modulation, I for one would be supportive, and this commission has in the past supported an alternative from virtually the same regulation over on the east side commercial area. The, yes.
Oh, just if I could speak to that, Commissioner. We are very happy with the development of the design and our collaboration with staff and Arnold on this development. And so we, we like that it frames the retail entry specifically and creates an accent for the office. So we like where the design is now and would like to move forward with this design.
I can appreciate that, and with the number of hours you put in, I don't think voluntarily going back to redesign is first on your list, even for quote "just" unquote a facade, which involves a lot of work. I have to share, because I have made this comment before, that the problem with this modulation is that it interrupts the continuity of the building. Whereas on sheet A 3.12, you actually can draw the lines through that indicate the mountains at the storefront or curtain wall. In reality, as is shown on A 3.11, there is no such continuity. And that costs you integrity of form, though I suspect you're aware of that. And so having put that out on the table, if it's built and someone asks me five years from now, how on earth do we have these five buildings? I can at least say, well, I did point it out. Regarding the pedestrian-level canopy, though, I have a somewhat stronger feeling. We have lovely weather this week, but we frequently in Menlo Park are hiding from the sun as we do almost throughout California through many months of the year. And then there are actually a couple of months where we're ducking out of the rain. But I think it's primarily being able to walk down the sidewalk without being baked. And there is an attraction for the pedestrian to walk under a canopy. That canopy need not be attached directly to the building, and it need not be completely opaque. There's a canopy at 622 Santa Cruz, which is, or was, clear acrylic, for example. And so there are some alternatives. And then regarding some kind of solar shading, well, I'm a little surprised, not just because it's been part of architecture school since the late 60s, but because particularly as we have incorporated green design into our state building code and to our local expectations, that some level of solar shading didn't come into play. But I realize you are not facing directly south or directly east on the Santa Cruz side. So I think that's not something that's appropriate for a commissioner to push. So although I would very much like to have seen a more integrated building, I realize what you're up against with our specific plan guidelines. And I think, as I said at the beginning, the net result is such an improvement, and the materials, I think, add so much light quality to the street that I do look forward to this.
I'm going to assume that it was Commissioner Party, then Commissioner Doran, if that's okay?
Thank you. Yeah, to the applicant, thank you for your commitment to the community and thank you for the sustainability that is embedded in redesigning, repurposing an existing building in this mix. I am also prepared to support it. I really do concur with feedback from Commissioners Cale and I believe the last part from Commissioner Riggs about canopies and about something that can make it feel a little bit less like a fairly flat expanse that goes up for what feels like two floors, especially with all the glass. I am very appreciative of having the glass in order to save on the energy and the interior lighting on it. So I still get the point, but wonder if there is some way, especially on the street side, to be able to address that issue. But that would be some of my comments and, and thank you for your commitment to the city in the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Doran?
Yeah, I'd just like to add my voice. I think the project is imminently supportable. I really applaud them, the applicants for using the building that's there and making it better and not just tearing down and starting again, like you see so much of. I think environmentally, it's much superior to use what's already there. And it's a great update. I think it will be a great addition to the downtown. We take one, take issue with one point, you know, applicants made their presentation, that this site was unique in having a dual facade on the street and on the parking lot. There's actually a lot of retail and restaurant spaces that do have the dual facade. But I do think that these applicants should be applauded for actually doing something with the parking lot elevation, which almost everyone else has neglected to do. So I think they've done a fine job on both sides of the building and I'm prepared to support it.
I have a question for, thank you. I have a question for the applicant. And I apologize, I was looking at plans as Commissioner Riggs was speaking and I and I know he covered canopies. Could you please just resummarize the your position on any type of addition of canopies to the, to the building on the Santa Cruz side? You're muted.
Sorry about that. We, when this comment came up from the design consultant, we studied that element on the facade and beyond the issue of reducing the light, we felt it really makes that, that glass more busy by creating this additional horizontal element. We wanted to keep a very clean, simple glass line to minimize that.
And you're referencing second story canopies, not first story canopies? Where, when you say the, the glass line, the glass line on the first floor or on the second floor?
The, in our discussions with the, with the staff and design consultant, the primary comments were regarding the upper floors and the lack of solar shades at that element, which we felt very just clean lines were more appropriate and keeping it simple.
Thank you. I don't know how the canopies, I don't know what form they would take. I must say that I have a predisposition towards canopies on the facade. I mean, I'm looking at the pictures of the different buildings and no, we don't want to build backwards to other design elements, but universally, for instance, on A 410, with the exception of Bistro Galata, they've got some element of overhang. Okay, I'll park that. Looking for any additional commissioner comments. Again, we do not have a motion as of, as of yet. If someone wants to make a motion on this project. Commissioner Cale?
We've had public comment already, haven't we?
Yes.
Okay, lost track.
Me as well.
So yeah, it's a easily supportable project. It has a, it's a vast improvement to what's there. I think we're all kind of wishing that there was something a little bit more with the shading, but it sounds like the applicant is, doesn't want to do that. So I'm not going to make a motion to force that. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to approve the application as written in the staff report.
We have a first from Commissioner Cale, Commissioner Riggs?
I, until seconds ago, I was of the same mind as Mr. Cale to, with regret about the canopies, move ahead with what is clearly a vast improvement. And I must not only echo the comment, but appreciate that the two other commissioners noted the benefits of reuse of an existing structure because they are huge. There seems to be nearly a consensus on the part of the commission of regret not to have canopies. And staff and our design consultant have expressed that they were asked for as part of the development of downtown. And certainly when it was put into the design guidelines, because the continuity of canopies is a particularly neat thing in a village or downtown. It's not something you will find at the base of a series of towers in a large city. It is something you are much more likely to see in a village. And it lends a continuity that, a functional continuity that is probably the best thing we can have, since we don't have any architectural continuity in terms of form, style, et cetera. So I would like to second the motion to support the project, but with the request that the applicant come back with a proposal for if not continuous canopy along the facade, since once again, our DSP guidelines force an interruption to that. At least a predominant effort at such a canopy line. And I will just point out that somewhat ironically, from the rear facade with where we emphasize canopies, it's interesting that the horizontal lines that would be consistent with the canopy are there on the elevator tower to the point where the elevator tower actually has the most character of the entire facade of the building. So I can see that the character is there, wanting to come out in spite of the emphasis on simplicity. I'm feeling a little bit of pushback to our multiple comments that may relate to expediting a design that is already cooked. And maybe at the to the loss of the overall project. So if the maker would consider, I would like to add that stipulation that something come back for staff and, and at least electronic circulation to planning commission for some kind of a nearly continuous canopy.
Thank you for the comment and I, thanks for pointing out the rear elevation in the, the tower. I think that's a, a really perhaps even a better facade than the front elevations because of that element there. I agree with asking for the applicant to come back with something. Commissioner Riggs, are you open to a, what's the term, conformance review? So it can be reviewed at the staff level rather than coming back to us?
I am. In this case, I think we have strong staff looking at this project. And I do think it would avoid the perception of bypassing the commission to have it circulated electronically. This has been submitted to staff. We are inclined to approve at this point if any commissioner disagrees, you know, the, the usual verbiage.
Then the then the amendment to the motion is fine for me. I'll just point out that when I'm thinking of canopies, the applicant has a lot of range to, to work with this. On one level, I think we're thinking about a continuous canopy across the, the ground floor. It could also be, I'm thinking of another project where there are metal L-shaped sort of shade structures for the windows. I think I'll just leave it to the applicant to see what works best with the project and what fits the street the best. So I'll accept the second, the seconders amendment and take a vote on that.
Thank you. Mr. Pruder?
Thank you, Chair Barnes. If I may, through you, I just wanted to confirm what was stated. It sounded like in the exchange between Commissioners Cale and Vice Chair Riggs, that this would be a staff review only. And there was mention of a memo, but a memo would be something that would be looked at by the planning commission in some way. Sounds like that is not the case in terms of what you're requesting. You were just preferring that staff review this at a building permit stage and make the determination independent of planning commission. Is that correct?
I was anticipating something prior to building permit application that would be reviewed with staff. It would be circulated to the commission. And I'm not sure what name you've put on this process, but similar to conformance reviews and staff reviews of hazardous chemicals where the commission is informed and given the opportunity to say, oh my God, that's not what we meant. And it would, in my view, satisfy the public expectation that the commission didn't just sort of hand this off and say, close enough, let's staff take it from here. But I frankly, I don't anticipate a whole lot of comment back from, certainly from myself, given the strength of the staff that we have on this project. And the goals that they've stated and the comments that they've heard tonight. Is that, is that clear or muddy? Mr. Pruder?
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Riggs. I understand your direction in that case. Thank you.
And I'll call you in a moment, Mr. Speaker. Hold for a moment. So, Mr. Cale, you are also fine with the direction of that, both the process in the, in the spirit of the review that staff will be undertaking?
Yes, I agree.
And Mr. Pruder, you again are comfortable with the spirit of what is being conveyed in terms of not being prescriptive for what the commission is looking for, but the idea of behind the potential improvement to the design?
Yes, I am. I'm willing to defer to Mr. Memorial as well for additional clarification.
I just had one question because I'm, I want to make clear that we're talking about canopies for the first level of the building and also that we're talking for Santa Cruz Avenue as opposed to for both sides of the building. And in the motion, I wasn't totally clear that whether you were thinking about both sides of the building or just Santa Cruz Avenue.
Yes, that would be Santa Cruz Avenue and pedestrian level. Although we have also heard comments in favor of Santa Cruz Avenue upper level or upper level and solar issues, I I, at least for myself, would prefer to leave that to the architects.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cale, is that in line with your understanding?
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Speaker?
So, so just so I'm clear, you guys would be requiring a canopy on the first floor along Santa Cruz Avenue only. And I have a little bit of frustration at the process. You know, we had extensive back and forth with staff as it related to the modulation. And then to hear Commissioner Riggs' comments about, well, maybe we would look at something different. I don't know how I feel, you know, wanting to start this, you know, start construction as soon as possible, to adding a canopy that has to go through staff and then get circulated through the commission and get a bunch of different opinions. I, I'd rather not do it. I'd rather for the commission vote on us not having to put the canopy in. But if it is going to be a condition of approval, I would ask that it just get approved through staff.
Thank you for that. I'll ask Mr. Cale, do you have any intention of amending your motion?
No, I could go either way. I'll listen to Commissioner Riggs' input. As he mentioned, as Commissioner Riggs mentioned, I doubt that anyone on the planning commission will have any issues with a memo circulated through us. It's nice to have that, that look. I don't think anything will happen with it. Not a guarantee, of course. Like I said, I can go either way. If Commissioner Riggs wants to, if he feels strongly about the conformance review, I'll stick with that. Otherwise, I could not have that part.
Commissioner Riggs?
I see the conformance review as besides procedurally appropriate, I think it's functionally a backup to staff to say there was something expressed at planning commission and this needs to be moved forward. And if the risk of talking which cards to pull in front of the players, the, I believe it helps for for our staff to be able to say, gee, I'd like to bail on this or, or bend on this. But commission has But commission has certain expectations and there was a certain consensus expressed in comments. So I think if anything, it expresses consolidation here. I think Mr. Cale expressed it well when he said that at least speaking for he and I, we don't anticipate second guessing what Mr. Paz and Mr. Memoriala come come to. And frankly, I would rather not. We are more saying, look, this was a requirement. Staff pointed out that or 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 a firm guideline, staff pointed out that the guideline wasn't met. We do think it should be met. But it's not for us to design it. And it should be worked out between you and staff. So you could, I hope, consider it a formality that needs to be circulated to this commission. We could even take a straw poll, I suppose, if anyone here harbors an intention to get further involved. But I certainly haven't heard any evidence of it tonight. Does that help?
Does that answer your question, Chairman?
It does. So we'll proceed. We'll proceed with the as I understand it, the motion vote on the motion which calls for a conformance review and tweak my my the exact naming of this review, Mr. Pruder, a review of the additions, facade additions through a memo to the commissioners. And that process will remain in place. That's the related to this project. So that's the that's the net of it is where we stand. And Commissioner Cale didn't object to that. Commissioner Commissioner Cale, as I understand it, has accepted Commissioner Riggs narrative that it is better to have it be a conformance review type process. So that's the motion we have on the floor. We'll look for a vote on that. But before I do that, any last comments from any commissioners? Seeing none, I will alphabetically call out the commissioners. And please signal your your vote. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty is a yes. Commissioner Doran.
Yes.
He's a yes. Commissioner Cale.
Yes.
Cale is a yes. Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy is a yes. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes, and with appreciation to Wendy Hill.
Commissioner Riggs is a yes with appreciation. Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate is a is a no. Commissioner Barnes is a yes. So let the record show that voting yes was Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Cale, Kennedy, Riggs. Voting no was Commissioner Tate. The motion passes. Congratulations. And with that, we will proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is still in regular business. It is G two. It is the 202021 Capital Improvement Plan, General Plan Consistency. This is consideration of consistency for the 202021 projects of the five year capital improvement plan with the general plan. Good evening, Mr. Lamb.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and commissioners. I am Chris Lamb, Assistant Public Works Director. Here tonight to request that the planning commission adopt resolution 2020 dash oh one determining that the five year capital improvement plans projects for the upcoming fiscal year of 202021 are consistent with the city's general plan. The city's capital improvement plan is a community's vision for both short and long range development, maintenance and improvement of the city's infrastructure benefiting its residents, businesses and visitors. It provides a linkage between the city's general plan, various master plans and studies, and the resulting projects. The city plans its capital investments over a five year period, however, updates the plan annually as part of the budget process. The projects in attachment A of the resolution represent the 28 projects set to receive funding in the upcoming fiscal year totaling about $20 million of investment. It's not not the full full range of projects that are in the five year CIP. So just for clarification, these are only the projects set to receive funding, which is what the commission is going to be determining are consistent with the general plan. Earlier today, it was brought to staff's attention that there is a typo in the attachment A. So in the transportation section, there are two projects regarding street resurfacing, one on Ravenswood and one on Willow Road. And the project limits on those while they're correct in the descriptions are backwards in the actual project name. So Ravenswood Avenue Street Resurfacing reads currently as Middlefield to US 101, whereas that should read Alma to Markison. And the Willow Road Street Resurfacing reads Alma to Markison and should read Middlefield to US 101. So as as part of part of the adoption of the resolution, that that correction would be made in the in the attachment. I believe there is also a written public comment that was received that I can read off. I'm I'm not sure if somebody is going to pull it up on to to the the screen or or if there I should take any clarifying questions before before public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's let's come back to that for the public when I call for public comment. So just hold that thought. And prior to that, I'll look to any of my commissioners for any questions for Mr. Lamb. Mr. DeCarty.
Thank you for staying with us tonight for three hours, Mr. Lamb. Appreciate it. Appreciate the presentation. I have a couple of questions. One, you mentioned 28 projects at $20 million. I didn't see in the materials that we received any more specificity about the amount of funding for each project. I wondered if I I missed that or if there was a way we should have seen that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Historically, this this resolution hasn't hasn't included that information. That that'll be in the actual budgeted option, of course. But I think for for future years, if that's something that the commission is interested in, can potentially be included.
Okay, thank you. In future years, I probably appreciate it. Through the chair, a couple more questions, if that's okay. My second question is can you remind me of the timeline of when these 28 were were selected? When in the course of this year has this been and and just sort of the process and how they got here? Who brought those forward? And in what kind of timing I get from here, it goes from here to the city council. But how did it? How did these get selected to get to here?
Yeah. Of course, this this year it's been a little bit unique in in a lot of ways with with the shelter in place. So in in early March, just before the shelter in place order was initiated, there was a presentation to the city council on on the the prior year's CIP. And then once we once we got into shelter in place and in late March or to mid April, it was it was clear that the city wasn't going to have the usual funds available to to take on a bunch of a bunch of new projects. So most of the projects that that you see listed here are are either projects that were already on the 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 five year CIP. So there we are essentially advancing what was was already planned in in prior years. And with the the one the one big exception would be the the Bell Haven Community Center and Library, which is was an offer from from Facebook to construct that that facility. But with some some matching matching funds that the city needs to program towards towards that project. Otherwise, I think the the only other, the only other project that was a new add to the project was a a project that is completely grant funded. So there's there's no no actual city contribution.
And just to clarify or follow up, I appreciate that presumably, especially with the reduction in available resources, there are existing projects that that may have made it on to this list but were determined not to, some prioritization at that point. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, that that's correct. There were there were some projects that that were set to receive funding that have been been pushed out. The the determination that was made on on those was frankly, whether whether or not we were going to get to those projects in this upcoming year anyways. So if if staff staff didn't have the resources to to address one of those projects, we've we've deferred the funding to a future year.
So the the criteria for deciding which projects that was the criteria was essentially staff capacity to execute anyway. As you said, this is a unique time. Is that a
Right.
characterization? Okay.
That's fair. And and in the last year with with council staff also prioritized the projects as to which ones staff should be working on. So the the council helped put the put the various projects into buckets or tiers of what what was more important than others.
Right. And that happened before the March timeframe that you spoke about.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And then thank you for your patience on this. I just just one more. So asking us for consistency, that's what our role is. Can you what does that mean? I mean, what's the definition of consistency that that were from from your guidance that we are supposed to be applying here?
Yeah, so I think that that's a great question. The 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 staff report mentions that it's pull it up here. Consistency, I guess, consistency with the general plan. So the the overall goals of of the intention of the general plan. The the staff's taken taken stab at identifying which elements of the general plan we think the various projects are are adhering to. And so a number of them would would obviously fall into multiple categories. The 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 most prevalent category is what what's been selected here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, go ahead, please. No, I was just in in table A is is where the projects are being categorized by by the the general plan reference.
I understand. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Cale.
Thank you. Just one quick question. I'm thinking back to previous years and I remember a different format where excuse me, where there was a priority list, like there was a top priority and then going down to a low priority. Is I might be remembering this incorrectly, but is that due to the five year plan that we looked at before? And this is only a one year plan?
So I think you might be referring to the the actual CIP that that shows up in the budget document. So that that's where that's where the projects are are were categorized into different tiers of kind of importance.
Okay, and this is not that list because this is these are projects that have already been approved and are ready to go.
The this is the list of projects. So from the from the five year plan, these projects are receiving funds in this upcoming year. There there's a lot of other projects that have already received funds that that the CIP team in the city is is actively working on. And there's a number of projects that will continue to receive funds in future years. So so both of those lists are not included on this list. So this is this list is only projects that are receiving funds in this upcoming fiscal year.
Got it. Thank you very much.
So sorry, let me clarify what you just said, Mr. Lamb. These are only the projects that are receiving funds in this upcoming year. And then prior to that, you referenced projects that already had been commenced, are they projects that had been commenced but are funding for them is abating for a period of time and then they'll come back and get funded again? Or is it the entire universe of projects which are in someone's work plan somewhere and will receive some level of funding?
So so projects that have that have been funded in the past, I guess, one of the one of the differences between how the the capital improvement plan works and 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 funds are allocated versus the 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 city's operating budget is the city's operating budget is for for one year at a time. The 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 capital improvement projects that are funded because they regularly take more than one fiscal year to to complete. When you think of the the design design and construction can take, you know, multiple, multiple years on on the number of these projects. So when when those projects receive funding, if if that funding isn't expended in a in a fiscal year, it carries forward. So those projects that have been funded in the past, that funding is is still available until the council takes direction to to unfund them essentially. So we're now proposing via this action to to unfund any any projects. I think there actually are some projects that 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 are on the table for for council to to discuss to potentially defund from a prior prior funding year. But under under normal conditions, the that project funding would would just carry forward and staff would continue to work on it in in the in future years.
Thank you. And my next question is kind of a process slash governance question. So for the projects that are on the list and are going to get worked on this year, what's the dynamic between staff and staffs as professionals, their overview of the city, things that need to get done, best practices for either maintenance, repair, restoration versus council, which may come at it from a political perspective, how do these coexist? And does the staff prepare what it believes is spending appropriate for the city to make the city quote work in the way that is upkeep and there's restoration and renovation and rebuilds? And how does that bounce against what the what the the council says? And how does that sausage get made?
That's a that's a great, great question, Chair. The it it really will vary project by project. So so some projects are definitely more maintenance related projects. They're 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 not very political in their nature and are frankly somewhat somewhat boring for the council. And so I would say on those projects, staff gets to use quite a bit of judgment in in selecting which streets get slurry sealed, which water mains get replaced and and those sorts of things. Other other projects clearly are very political. And so typically what what council will ask of staff is to have a a robust public outreach program on on those certain projects to make sure that if if they are being asked to make a ultimately a difficult decision on a project. a difficult decision on a project, that we've done our part to make sure they're informed as much as possible to make that decision.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Riggs.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to ask just regarding one item. I think it's the second item of the projects, which is the downtown parking lot utility undergrounding. It indicates a connection to the potential for building parking structures. But, we have, what is it, eight parking lots? Three of those are designated as potential parking structure lots, and we're unlikely to build more than one, I think. So, the future will tell. Which parking lots does this refer to in terms of undergrounding? In other words, is there a direct connection between the likely parking structure? Or is it that that's an also relevant kind of thing?
Thank you, Commissioner. So, the name of this project was established several years ago. The project itself is utilizing PG&E Rule 20A undergrounding credits. So, the city has allocated a certain amount of undergrounding credits each year, and the city's accumulated a bit of a balance and is essentially ready to move forward on an undergrounding project. The council in February actually established three districts. So, the first step of that process is to establish an undergrounding district. And in February, the council took the action to establish three different districts within the city. So, one which encompasses kind of the greater downtown area. I think it, all the way from between Menlo and, blanking on my street names, forgive me. The Oak Grove, Santa Cruz, and Menlo, and all the parking plazas contained within there. The other location was Middlefield for pretty much the entire city limits. And then, finally, a portion of Alma Street, kind of fronting the Burgess Park. So, that action was taken in February to preserve credits. We actually had received notification from PG that had been essentially so long since we utilized any that they were going to start applying them to other cities that had active projects. So, by taking that action in February, it signified that we were interested in pursuing the projects. Now, the funds that we have can really only afford potentially two of those locations. So, we will be still going back to the city council to get some more clarification on which of those locations they would like us to proceed with. The thought was, I think initially, that for the downtown area, that parking plazas seven and eight would be identified as there were also future plans to renovate those parking lots as well.
Very informative. I had no idea. Are you aware, Mr. Lamb? Rule 28 rules out using the undergrounding funds in the neighborhoods.
I believe that's correct.
Oh, that is? They cannot be used in the neighborhoods?
No, yeah. So, one of our senior project managers worked on that staff report. I have to go back and double-check, but that was, I believe, found out that for like a residential neighborhood, a residential street does not qualify for the use of Rule 20A funds.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
And then, question, Mr. Lamb. The Belle Haven Community Center and Library. I don't recall if any of my fellow commissioners asked about it. No one has, correct?
I don't believe so.
What is your understanding of where that project stands?
So, the latest of what I've heard and been involved in is that Facebook is still intending to move forward with the project. So, the, you know, nothing related to COVID or the shelter in place has changed their intent to proceed. I think there's been some delay in the project schedule, but they're still intending to proceed.
That's your understanding currently?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And this is looking for a resolution for the adoption determining that the five-year capital improvement plans, projects for fiscal year 2021 are consistent with the general plan. Attachment A, I will move, I'll make a motion, excuse me.
There was a public comment.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I was, thank you so much for that. Yes, please proceed with that. Which means we haven't even done commissioner discussion yet. We're still in clarifying questions. Great, thank you. Let's proceed with the public comment. Can you read that for us? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read from this screen over here. So, if I'm not looking at the camera, that's why. But I've got it a little bit larger than what's coming up on the laptop. All right, so the public comment is from Pamela Jones. Chairperson Barnes, Vice Chair Riggs, Commissioners and Staff, thank you for placing 2020-2021 Capital Improvement Plan General Consistency on the agenda prior to the council budget hearing on June 9, 2020. Given that we are in a time of multiple uncertainties, including waiting for a state and county balanced budget, it would be prudent for all non-critical CIP projects to remain on hold for at least 90 days. For example, place the following projects on hold slash delay. One, downtown parking utility underground. Delay until there is a complete approved downtown revitalization plan. Two, Bedwell Bayfront Park Master Plan Implementation. Delay entrance plan and continue with most critical for use of the park. Three, electric vehicle chargers at city facilities. Use existing EVC stations. Four, park playground equipment. Replace or repair as required to meet California safety standards. Five, Ravenswood Avenue street resurfacing. Six, Willow Road street resurfacing. Seven, Willow Road transportation study. Hold until businesses are at least Phase Four of opening. Facebook has announced that up to 50% of its employees may continue to work from home. Thank you for your service to the city of Menlo Park. Stay well. Pamela D. Jones, Menlo Park resident.
Thank you. And with that, the public comment, I didn't officially open public comment, so I will open it now, admit that to public comment, and then look out to Mr. Tapia for anyone in queue for public comment on this item, in addition to what we just heard.
Thank you, Chair Barnes. Just as a reminder for members of the public who are still with us, if you have a comment at this time, please click on that hand icon on your control panel so you can notify a member of staff. Or alternatively, you can write in your question or comment in the question field. And at this time, Chair Barnes, we are showing one public commenter who would like to share their comment or question at this time.
And I see Pamela Jones as the hand up. My assumption is that that, what was just read was Pamela Jones's email. So, that, we just heard public comment from her in the form of Mr. Lamb reading that. Is there any way to confirm that that, in fact, was her only public comment?
I believe we would have to activate her. Would you like me to activate her microphone?
If she's on, sure.
Okay, Pamela Jones, you are now active.
Good evening, Chairman Barnes. And thank you very much. That was my statement. Although I had wanted to read it, I'm a little confused about the project, the process with doing that. I just wanted to emphasize that we are in a pandemic emergency, and that it would seem to me that the general rules that we operate under should be considered as extremely flexible because we do have so many unknowns. And I did not have the amount of money that these projects were. But hearing that it's $20 million, a three-month delay on projects would give us approximately 25% or $5 million that we would have, and then could proceed with projects once we know exactly what our income is going to be. So, I encourage the planning commission that though you approve the resolution, that you add an addendum expressing whatever else comments that you have. And my comments as well, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any additional comments at this time. Chair Barnes.
Thank you. So, with that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the dais for Commissioner discussion and a motion. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I appreciate the questions. I appreciate the exchange of information, Mr. Lamb. I really appreciate Ms. Jones taking the time to submit her comments and also to be here and to express it late into the evening. It seems to me that we are in an extraordinary moment that the general plan is designed and with capital improvement projects fitting in with it so that we end up with the city that we want to have for all of us to be able to enjoy and to thrive and to prosper. And at this time, especially because the guidance given to staff coming from city council was well before the pandemic, which changes what our city is going to look like and what the priorities are. It will certainly change transportation and quite likely workplace utilization, all that into the future, number one. Number two, the pandemic and its response has generated this recession, the downturn in our budget that Ms. Jones referred to. And number three is having a disproportionate impact on people in our community. For me, it doesn't seem that just sort of a straight-up consistency measure with does this fit or does it not fit within more broadly the general plan is enough. I'm certainly happy to support moving this forward to the city council, but would absolutely want to include that the city council should reprioritize what moves forward based on the disproportionate impacts of the pandemic and the recession on our community and the need to invest in our community such that, as much as possible, we can address those disparities with the prioritization of our capital improvement efforts. Thank you.
Commissioner Tate.
I completely agree with DeCarty on that. To have the council reprioritize what's on the list, because definitely things have changed since it was evaluated last.
Commissioner Riggs.
My feelings are in the same line as both the public speaker and my fellow commissioners. Recognizing that council is at least as sensitive as its planning commission and that our role tonight is to make a finding regarding general plan consistency, I would like to move to make that recommendation to council that we find the project list to be consistent with the general plan and trusting that they are more than aware of the financial and social conditions of the moment.
Commissioner Tate.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I'm clear with what that motion was. Is that to add something for council to consider? Or, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your motion, Commissioner Riggs.
Commissioner Riggs.
My motion is limited to, as a motion, to find that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. And then, I would certainly leave open any follow-up advisory motion by a fellow commissioner and probably would support it. But, at this point, I'm performing my, I hope, performing my duty regarding this agenda item at this moment, just that.
Question to Mr. Lamb. So, this list here doesn't presuppose prioritization. Where, how does prioritization happen?
So, last year during the budget adoption, staff presented a series of criteria as to what staff felt the prioritization of the projects should be. And there were a number of factors that were taken into account. I don't have the full list in front of me, but it included things like, obviously, health and safety, projects that are required per either state or federal guidelines, preservation of city assets, and what were some of the other? There are a handful of criteria along those lines. You know, and then there's always kind of the more, the nice-to-have projects that don't rise to the same level of need to move forward at any given time. So, that's kind of the criteria that was established last year. As we finish the CIP and present that in the budget this upcoming year, we'll take another pass at those priorities of the projects. But, at the end of the day, all the projects are considered priorities of the city council. That's why they've been funded in the first place. It's just a matter of which ones will get the most immediate attention.
And often, you can tell prioritization by funding, and not just the scale of funding, because some of them are much larger, but in order to tell what's, would have to have the approved budget associated with the line item to be able to see where the priorities lie. Is that fairly correct?
To some extent, yes. You know, there are certain projects that are less costly that are just as important as more costly projects. So, I would say that a loose connection, not, not.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you for that clarity. So, we've got a first from Commissioner Riggs. And I'll look for a second to that. Commissioner Riggs's motion is for the adoption of this Resolution 2020-202001, as included in the staff packet. Is there any other Commissioner comments? I'm looking for a second. Commissioner DeCarty.
I just have a clarifying question for Commissioner Riggs. So, Commissioner Riggs, your intent would be to have a motion that is... have a motion that is specific, essentially is the one, is the draft resolution that's in our packet. And nothing else. Then you would be amenable to a second motion that you, that you termed an advisory motion. And you, you may be amenable to that. There, I guess I don't understand the necessarily why there needs to be a distinction between those two. And if we could not just combine that into one motion, if you could clarify.
Um, sure. Um, I, I think potentially we could, um, I, I think this is my 14th CIP review and I've reluctantly settled for the fact that our task when it's presented to us is to find if it is or is not in conformance with the general plan. So I've come to find that it's easier to make that statement. Uh, it does seem to be, uh, easier on staff, as has been in the somewhat distant past made clear to me. There's no reason we can't follow up, going off script, um, with the, um, concerns that we have on our minds. I, uh, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that. Uh, I, I think it's cleaner and simpler. We, uh, could, um, through the chair also just ask staff how they would like our sentiments linked or not linked with our duty tonight.
Mr. Lamb, you coming on that?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I, the, as Commissioner Riggs, um, mentioned, the, the action that's being sought is really just to, to certify that the, that the projects are consistent with the general plan. I think if there's, um, uh, additional, um, kind of guidance that, or, or recommendations that, that the, that the commission would, would like to provide to the city council, it could, it, I think it could go either way, um, whether it's included in the actual motion or, or a second motion.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty, do you have a follow-up to that?
Yeah, I would just, uh, for me, it seems, um, look, it's late and I don't want to keep everybody. Um, I would like to see us as a commission acknowledge this extraordinary time, acknowledge the disproportionate impacts in our community and have some way of standing up for our neighbors and our residents as we, um, move this forward to the city council. I, I understand that, we have a fairly, on one level narrowly defined, um, um, ask in front of us. But it is also, you can drive a truck through the definition of correlation, which is in the draft, that we are looking at approving, um, and with consistency, and then also asking with what aspects of the general plan, the principles or the goals. And I don't need to spend a ton of time tonight trying to unpack all of that to prove a point. I just want us in some way to be, um, I would like to advocate for us to be, uh, clear simply about this moment in time and the need to recognize the disproportionate impact in our community and to ask our city council as they look at these capital improvement projects to take that into consideration. And whatever the simplest way is to do that, that can allow us to move forward here, um, I'm fine with.
Okay. So with that, to recap, we have a first from Riggs. We do not have a second, as I understand it on this. And anything that should the second or the first offer any additional language?
Yeah, I will withdraw my first. Uh, I see that there's a desire from Mr. DeCarty to, um, uh, make a statement and I don't want to, uh, stand in the way of that, nor frankly, do I want to spend another 20 minutes on, uh, a rather simple procedure. So, uh, I'll, I'll withdraw my first.
So we have no motion. Uh, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the provision, um, as drafted Resolution Number 2021, which I think is on page A1, with adding language that is in the third whereas. That right now says, has determined that all of the current CIP projects correlate with the adopted goals of the city's general plan and should be prioritized in order to benefit and should be prioritized uh, to benefit parts of our community disproportionately impacted by the pandemic and its economic impacts. And then continue with the language as stated.
Okay, for, for clarification, there are three wherethes. This would be a whereas that tucks under the, uh, effectively being the fourth whereas?
It's the third whereas. It says right now, the planning commission of the city of Menlo Park has determined that all of the current CIP projects correlate with the adopted goals of the city's general plan. I would then add language.
After the and.
As attached Exhibit A, and should be prioritized to address areas of our community disproportionately impacted by the pandemic and the resulting economic impact. That's using impact twice, but it's late. Now therefore be resolved. I believe in doing that, I, I address Commissioner Riggs's point, which is in the therefore be it resolved. We are saying it's consistent with the general plan, but we have also stated that disproportionate impact should be addressed.
It should be prioritized to address areas of our community disproportionately impacted
by the pandemic
and.
And the resulting economic. Whatever, uh, economic something. Impact is what I said, if you have a better word, or if anybody does.
Okay, so I'm going to read it again and then I'm going to check in with Mr. Lamb on this, um, topic. So it's the third whereas and should be prioritized to address areas of our community disproportionately impacted by the pandemic and resulting economic impact and now therefore be it resolved, et cetera. So, uh, going back to you, Mr. Lamb. So we can understand, uh, this is a form document. This is the draft resolution. This gets memorialized by the, um, by Deanna Chow. Adding language into this document, does it create a situation where this is not, uh, it doesn't satisfy the requirement of it to be a resolution, for the planning commission for the city of Menlo Park? Does it, does it in some way disqualify what this is intended to do if this is embedded in this document?
No, I, I, while, while I'm not the, the, the city attorney, I, I think that, I think the inclusion of this language would be fine.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Doran.
Yeah, um, I was just going to suggest, uh, an alternate word for the second impact in that addition to the resolution that we sort of carried out for rather than, uh, the final one being economic impacts, we could say economic dislocations. And I'd be prepared to second the, uh, motion.
That's fine with me.
Okay, um, Mr. Lamb, do you have this? Do you want me to repeat it again? Um, what's your method of note-taking so that we have the same language? And I'm happy to repeat it again.
If you, if you could repeat it one more time, I've, I've, I've jotted it down, but I've also crossed some things out and, and rewritten words as they've been read differently a few times.
Okay. So, uh, again, it starts with the third whereas, and it begins after the last and. Should be prioritized to address areas of our community disproportionately impacted by the pandemic and resulting economic dislocation. And.
Got it.
Got it. Uh, and let me look back out to the seconder. That is, this is good, your, um, this is what you intend, correct? Mr. Doran.
Correct.
Great. And, uh, the, the maker, Mr. DeCarty, before I put this to vote, this is what you are intending? Okay, great. So we've got seconder, Mr. Doran with a, the maker being DeCarty on this. So with that, I'll ask one more time for any other Commissioner comments, and if I don't have any, we'll call for a vote. Seeing no other Commissioner comments. Starting alphabetically, Commissioner DeCarty.
I.
Mr. DeCarty's an I. Commissioner Doran.
Yep.
Commissioner Doran's a yep. Commissioner Kale.
Yes.
Commissioner Kale is a yes. Commissioner Kennedy. The half of the head of Commissioner Kennedy is a yes. That was a yes, correct? Yes. Uh, Commissioner Riggs. There's a thumbs up. And Commissioner Tate. Thumbs up as well. Barnes is a thumbs up as well. Let the record show, Barnes, DeCarty, Doran, Kale, Kennedy, Riggs, Tate, all voting yes in the affirmative to adopt the resolution as amended by the maker and the seconder. With that, uh, we're closing this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Lamb, for your time this evening. Thank you for sticking with us and being so helpful as we work through our decision-making process. We appreciate that. That closes our regular business items and we're moving to H informational Items. The last one is H1. This is future planning commission meeting schedule, and I'll give it back to Ms. Sandmeyer to wrap up anything else from staff.
So the next meeting will be June 22nd. Um, we have one single family project on there. And I think we may also put the, um, chair, vice chair rotation on there for the commission. But that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments, uh, specific to informational items from Ms. Sandmeyer? So seeing none, I will call at 10:53 PM this planning commission meeting on June 8th, 2020 into adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Staff, Chair Barnes.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.